So I will call this. Meeting of the Committee of the Whole for the Municipality of Jasper Council together for March ninth. Councillors, you have today's proposed agenda. Are there any? Additions, deletions, or other changes to be made to the agenda? Seeing nothing, may I have a motion please to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you, councillor Wilson. All in favor? Councillor Demoda, there you are. I called a question in favor of the agenda councillor Demoda, but you were not visible at the time. I take it you're in favor? Thank you. The minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting of February twenty-third have been circulated. Are there any errors, omissions, or corrections required to be made to those minutes? Seeing nothing, may I have a motion please to approve the minutes of? February twenty-third as presented. Councillor McGrath, thank you. All in favor? There are none opposed, that is carried. That takes us to agenda item four. Pardon me, sent item five presentations, and we have a standing item. Emergency Coordination Centre Updates. Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, your worship. A brief update this morning. You'll see that Jasper is maintaining its level of one current COVID infection. We are monitoring the rollout, as I'm sure all Albertans and Canadians are, of vaccines across the province with new vaccines being approved recently. We're watching the impacts of the recently announced provincial reopenings. As council is aware, there was additional measures taken by the government last night. So we'll be assessing the impact of that in the community. And then finally, activity levels are generally quite normal across all services. And by normal, I mean normal outside of COVID activity, because there is relatively low COVID activity right now. And the group will be reassessing the need to meet as the ECC. We would acknowledge that there is a continued need for coordination and communication among community partners. But we're assessing whether there's a need to meet in the formal ECC manner, and we'll be able to report back to council in the future on that. And that is all that I have to provide in terms of an update today.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Any questions of Mr. Given related to the ECC update? Councillor Butler.
Thanks very much. Thanks, Mr. Given, for that. I have just one question. Could you outline what, if any, involvement? Our bylaw department, to what degree they are or are not engaged in enforcing mask wearing? In the downtown, in the business district? I've had concerns raised with me. Both suggesting that there is too much enforcement and that there isn't enough, and I'm just unclear on to what degree our own staff are engaging in that issue.
Thanks, your worship, councillor Butler's question. Yeah, when you're getting that there's too much and not enough, it probably means that we're somewhere doing it about right. But I will report that the bylaw department, as a part of their regular activities, are doing patrols through the downtown core to observe people's compliance with the Municipality of Jasper masking bylaw, which is different and in addition to the provincial requirement which applies to indoor spaces. The Jasper bylaw, of course, applies to outdoor public spaces within that defined area. And so our bylaw team are using a part of their regular day-to-day activities to patrol the downtown area and encourage, inform, and encourage people to comply with our local Jasper regulations. I believe that over the course of the entire campaign, since, you know, prior to the start of this year, bylaw has only been in a position where they have had to issue one ticket with respect to someone who did not wish to comply. They were given the opportunity to comply with masking Jasper's masking requirements. They chose not to. They were issued a ticket under the municipal bylaw, and were provided an opportunity to return to demonstrate that they had a medically valid reason, and by law offered the opportunity that that ticket would be removed if that valid reason was forthcoming. And I haven't heard that that individual came forward with that medically valid or approved reason. So at a high level, they are actively monitoring, encouraging people to comply with our local bylaws. And they have only in that one instance had to undertake any direct enforcement activity, and even then, they provided the individual, I think, plenty of valid opportunity for them to comply and to demonstrate their reasons for non-compliance.
Go ahead, councillor Butler.
Thanks very much, just to follow up, and I'm happy to hear that. I just would like to further inquire whether, given the timing of influx of visitors to Jasper being focused primarily on weekends these days, though there's going to be school breaks coming up as well. Are we making efforts to focus our compliance activities at the times when the town is busiest?
Your worship, I can get back to council with a more detailed response by email if it's appropriate. But I will say that, given the relatively limited staffing in the bylaw department, as council is well aware, we do have to manage that, and so there are certain bylaw enforcement activities that they need to undertake during regular working hours. So it does somewhat limit their ability to be there in evenings. But I have a general belief that the team has shifted their hours to be able to try to cover as best as possible within current resources. Some of those outside of nine to five hours, and certainly I believe they do work on weekends, but I can get back to council via email with full details of the current scheduling. I know the bylaw has also moved forward with their engagement for some increased staffing in preparation for the summer season, as was approved, and so we will be able to see an expansion to those hours of service in alignment with that increase in staffing that's coming for the summer season.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Any other questions for Mr. Given related to the ECC updates? Seeing none, I will move to agenda item six. Is there any business arising from the minutes? I see nothing. Agenda item seven then, Policy and Governance. Agenda item seven point one, Council Strategic Priorities Update and the twenty 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 twenty-two Business Plan. Is there a report? It indicates verbal, but it's typically an opportunity for councillors to inquire about status. So if there is no report, I'll simply turn it to councillors for any questions or comments they may have with respect to the strategic priorities update. Councillor Jono.
That was a no, sorry, straight away, bit away. Sorry about that.
All right, if there is nothing, then we can move to agenda item eight, New Business. We begin with eight point one, Paid Parking. Public Engagement and Implementation Plans. There is an attachment to the agenda for that, and Mr. Given, are you leading us through that?
Yes, your worship. Thank you very much. And just upfront, I want to thank Ms. Malinchuk and Ms. Nodan for their work on developing the plans that you see presented here. I'll provide the cover report and context. I imagine that there will be some discussion, and we can talk about why administration is recommending the approach that we're recommending as we go through. So you'll see the recommendation is that the Committee of the Whole direct administration to carry out the paid parking, public engagement, and implementation plans as presented. In terms of background, council may know that there are four hundred and forty-nine stalls and defined parking lots on municipal property across the community, and another three hundred and sixty-five on-street stalls located in the central business district. Administration, for the scope of the paid parking pilot project this year, I think I'll just say the pilot project this year, so I don't get caught up in all the Ps, the alliteration. For the pilot project this year, administration is recommending a quite a narrow scope and an intentionally narrow scope of just two off-street parking lots. The first being near the public washrooms just off Canot, between Canot and the railway. And the second being the RV lot just off Hazel. Together, these two off-street lots contain one hundred and twenty-six regular stalls, sixty-one RV stalls, and two disabled parking stalls. You can see that the public engagement plan that is attached is aligned with the Municipality of Jasper's public engagement policy and proposes to take targeted engagement, considering those that are most directly impacted and most directly adjacent to the proposed pilot project sites, along with the broader business community and Jasperites as a whole. The implementation plan that is attached provides council an overview of the most significant project timelines and a breakdown of the financial model. Just to be clear, you know, as this is a pilot project, and there is relatively limited existing data on which administration could base its projections, so it is intentionally conservative. And still, I should highlight that it is a projection and only a forecast, that we're not in a position of knowing whether the actuals would prove out that way. But we can talk about some of the details. That caveat aside, the forecast does predict that it is possible that after expenses, the pilot project could return a positive financial return to the municipality over a hundred thousand dollars. I think it's important to note that a similar level of return from municipal taxes would require approximately a one point nine percent property tax increase to deliver the same amount of revenue. So this is, of course, in alignment with council strategic priorities with respect to seeking out and pursuing alternate sources of revenue, along with pursuing equitable allocation of costs between the community and visitors. And so administration has these two plans in front of council for information and discussion, and ultimately direction. I would be happy to take any questions or would just open there to the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Questions of Mr. Given or administration from staff? Councillor Wilson?
My question is, it looks like it intentionally left out parking in the downtown core, and can you expand on why we didn't tackle that this time around?
Yes, thanks councillor Wilson for the question. It is, you know, a typical approach. A very common approach is to have the higher rate on on-street parking and direct traffic to your off-street parking. Administration is fully aware of this, and we had to think about the complication of the COVID environment that we're in. The additional community discussion and the approval from Parks Canada for the expanded use of commercials, commercial use of public spaces which may interfere with on-street parking in the central core. Additionally, you know, the strategic reason is really one of ensuring that we get some good experience and some good data in the first year without impacting a really broad set of stakeholders. If we approached on-street parking in the central core in the first year, that would mean that we would likely have an impact on every business in the downtown core. The goal, the intent, sorry here, the intent here was to ensure that that was, that impact was limited to a fairly small geographic area that we could understand how other parts of downtown saw the change, how the people most closely located to the two lots saw the change, and to be able to actually measure that. So really, it was about taking an intentionally narrow scope so that we could get one year under our belts, so to speak, derive some data about how it was used and how it might or might not impact bleed into the adjacent areas and on-street areas. So it would be valid to say we should start the other way around and start with on-street parking, but given the complexities of on-street parking, the number of affected stakeholders, administration intentionally went the other direction and started with this very narrow scope of these two defined plots.
May I? I will. Richard's paused there, I think. Well, thank you for that, and that does make a lot of sense, but I just, again, I guess my second question would be, would there be much infrastructure invested into the two parking areas, whereas in the future, we decide that on-street parking will be charged for, but we'll be directing them to free parking in the parking area, parking lots?
Sure. So the answer, councillor Wilson, to your question about infrastructure is no, there is not a significant amount of hard infrastructure that's required for this. Really hard infrastructure would be limited essentially to signs, signage, which are, you know, low cost and easy enough to move. The proposal from administration includes the concept of essentially mobile app-based parking, and so it is very flexible and adaptable to whatever we might do in the future. I would suggest that in the future, it would be more likely that council would influence parking demand by the rate. And I'm not sure that we would be in a position to suggest that we should ever have a zero rate in any part of the municipality, but we may have rates that are at higher, higher at different times or higher in different locations to encourage people to use other areas. That's what I could imagine in the future, but for this year's project, there is not a significant capital investment that's required in terms of hard infrastructure.
Thank you. I apologize. I missed, I think, the follow-up question there. My screen was frozen. Somebody took charge, I take it. And the discussion continued. I'm sorry that I missed some of it, so I may have a question later on that is the same. In any event, I will turn now to councillor Demoda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to administration, Mr. Given. I thought that we were going to go down the path and engaging a company that had expertise in the field. My fear here is that we're not setting this project up for success, whether it's a pilot project or not. I understand the concept of moving away from downtown and experimenting in these other lots, but I, I would like to hear from somebody that has experienced in other resort municipalities that's conducted studies or has had operational experience that might say what we're doing could be, you know, detrimental to the, to the overall success of what our intention is here. And I think that even with the way it's set up, we might be unintentionally driving congestion into already congested areas, and I don't want to get into the minutia of that. But there are, as soon as I read the report, I don't think that we're setting ourselves up, because I don't think that there's, there's expert advice involved in that, and I'd like to see what, you know, a company or some type of advisor attached to a company would say about it and how we could implement this, because I'd like to see some sort of strategy put forward and then engage the community on the rollout of that strategy and, and, you know, involving parking permits, local parking permits, and where the best use of even pilot projects might even take place. So I think this is, to me, is just a bit of a piecemeal to start out, and I fear that it might just not get off to where we wanted it to go in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demoda. I will simply encourage councillors at this point. We are set to ask questions of administration for further information about the report as opposed to debate. We will, I guess, have a motion at some point relative to the recommended direction that we might give to administration. But for now, we are in the questioning information session, and we will move shortly to the debate session. So just keep that in mind. Councillor Demoda, go ahead.
Well, just to follow up then, so I thought that's where we left off with our direction, and so how come we are not engaging a company that has expertise in the field?
Thank you for that question. Mr. Given.
Yeah, thanks very much, your worship, councillor Demoda's question. Yes, councillor Demoda, we could engage a overall consultant to provide recommendations on how to develop a pilot project or how to develop paid parking. Administration has not recommended that. What we are recommending is engaging a service provider who has experience with paid parking, and it is likely that they'd be able to provide us some view of that. But to the larger point of your question, I think you'll see in the in the implementation plan, there is a diagram that shows the ongoing engagement with the community and stakeholders. It's administration's view that this approach allows us to develop our own local expertise and knowledge about what happens when you have paid parking in Jasper, rather than engaging somebody from the outside to say theoretically what should happen in Jasper. And so, you know, appreciate exactly what you're saying, that if we at additional cost brought in somebody to give us some kind of advice, we might be able to work on their base of knowledge. That is one hundred percent true. It would increase the upfront costs for trying something, and so the, you know, the intentional approach here is to build our own local knowledge and experience with good data. And to be very specific, the engagement plan proposes to survey stakeholders that are directly impacted before and after the project, so that we can establish, you know, sort of a baseline of, okay, what does it look like today? We do the project and then again, survey those that are directly impacted, say, how did that work? So that we can compare before and after, so that we have very, very specific, very granular Jasper-based data on which council can make decisions about any future of paid parking when we come back in the fall.
Other questions of Mr. Given or administration? Councillor Jono?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand we're not supposed to debate this, but I do have a question, it's true. Seems to me a paid parking system works where there is high congestion, high demand for parking, and you want people to move their cars so they're not permanently parked. These two lots do not have high congestion. It's the downtown core that has the high demand at peak times. The other thing about this, the Hazel lot, is that's where we have a lot of transportation pickups and delivery, especially in the wrapping companies. They used to come downtown in our, on Patricia Street, and we wanted them moved out to that lot, and that's why we've given them that lot, so I'm not sure what arrangements have to be made for them now coming in there. But I think as a pilot project, you have to start with the high congestion area. Otherwise, as councillor Demoda noted, these are low congestions, and these people are now going to move to the high congestion area. And I, I I'm not sure how to conclude this, but I'll leave it as a kind of an open question. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jono. Councillor Butler?
Thanks very much, and thank you, Mr. Given, and thank you to administration for all the work you've put into this. I kind of waited, and some of the questions that I had or concerns that I wanted to raise have already been raised, so that's good. What I'm wondering, though, I do understand the point that Mr. Given has made in respect of choosing, you know, a really cautious initial approach, but I also share the concern that we don't want to see our efforts fail because we've moved forward in half measures. And I am still concerned if we charge for two parking lots, which are frankly outlying and probably among the least desirable parking areas, while providing people with the option of unfettered, long-term, free parking in a great deal of the remainder of the downtown area, that it just won't hold together logically. And I'm wondering if there has been consideration given to changing or upgrading or adjusting the parking restrictions in the remainder of the downtown area. So almost all of Canot Drive, excepting the three-block area between Hazel and Balsam, is completely unmarked. It is completely open. People can park anything they want for as long as they want, or at least up to seventy-two hours with no interference yet. And so I'm concerned that what people are going to do is just park there. And if we're going to approach the question, approach the project with focusing on the lots, I'm wondering why those two lots are being included, but the other two substantial downtown lots are not being included. I think we might concern ourselves with, are we being notionally and logically consistent in our approach, so that those who are engaging can sort of see the logic around what we're, what we're doing. So I'm wondering, perhaps what we need to consider if we're going to take such a cautious approach is to adjust the downtown restrictions. Maybe some areas of downtown, which are now marked for two hours, should be marked for one hour. Maybe we should have shorter downtown parking if we're going to make it free, which would incent people to park in the paid areas where they're allowed to park longer. And maybe we should mark all of Canot Drive accordingly, whether that's two hours or one hour or something else, so that we're simply not moving what I expect to, I expect we will see a really substantial influx of RVs this summer. The campground's going to open again, and RVing is the flavor of the moment's response to COVID. And they're going to find a place to park, and right now, there is a great deal of real estate where they can park unfettered for as long as they want. So maybe if we are going to take such a cautious approach, we ought to, to paid parking, we ought to consider adjusting the parking restrictions, albeit unpaid, free in the downtown area. And I'm wondering if your team has given consideration to where we need to adjust those parking restrictions in response to our pilot project.
Your worship, to councillor Butler's question, just first on the smaller part, you know, in terms of what might be perceived to be an inconsistency in approach between, you know, having two defined lots with paid parking and then others on the east side of downtown without paid parking or those other major lots, councillor Butler. That was intentional, so we could measure the difference between the two. There was, last time we discussed this, some concern about how the start of paid parking may push parkers into residential areas. And so we wanted to be able to measure specifically, well, over here, where we did do paid parking, what happened? While over here, where we didn't do paid parking, what happened? And to be able to compare and contrast. So that is not a logical inconsistency. It's a, it's an intentional test to be able to make a comparison. But I appreciate, actually, your larger question on whether administration had considered adjusting the parking restrictions in the downtown core. The answer is no, we hadn't considered that. That's why this discussion at committee is helpful for council to raise additional options or ideas. I think this suggestion of administration looking to adjust the parking restrictions on Patricia and Canot is a worthwhile one, and that's something administration could take back. I'd suggest that it might be something that we would take to the stakeholder steering committee that we are proposing as a part of the public engagement plan. That kind of concept, we may wish to just check with representatives of the business community. Administration, as you'll see, is proposing that stakeholder committee would be an ongoing committee throughout the project, just to do check-ins with and see how things are going. Certainly, administration could simply bring forward to council for approval changes to the parking restriction in the downtown core. But council may wish to engage the stakeholders on that idea first before making a determination. It's certainly possible and a good suggestion.
Counselor de Moda?
Just let me know when we're going to engage in debate, because some of us have a better art of debating with a question. I'd rather just wait to passion out.
Thank you. And I I am feeling somewhat the same, although I I think I do have questions and the other comments I will I will leave to debate. If you can, Mr. Given, or through you to others, I need to have a better understanding, if you can provide that, of the good data that is anticipated to come from this pilot project. So it is it is a limited study based on what I think most of council acknowledge are sort of the least desirable far-flung lots. And so they are, in a sense, disincentivized by charging for them. There will be repercussions, but what good data will come of this in administration's view that we can then apply to an effort to manage parking in the downtown core? And again, without trying to get into debate, I I share some of the comments expressed by Counselor de Motive that we may be setting ourselves up for a degree of failure here. And I I have some questions about specifically about the public engagement piece of this. But in terms of the implementation plan, what do we expect to obtain in the sense of the good data that you referenced? What are we going to learn from this pilot project?
Well, from the implementation side, the first would be about actual utilization. As it is today, administration and I think council in the community have some likely, you know, informed, but still general and not objective sense of the utilization of these lots. So I couldn't tell you today, or and I I don't, I'm not aware that any other member of administration could tell you today exactly how many people use those lots on a Wednesday in June. So through this engagement, through this process, we will develop that kind of on-the-ground utilization data by virtue of how many people have paid for parking on a Wednesday in June at 5:00 PM. Yeah. So there is at least that level of information that that does not exist in the community today, other than on a observational basis that is not particularly rigorous. Additionally, we would look to establish specific numbers to establish a baseline of people's sentiment and and feelings about parking in their area. I mean, I I and administration are well aware that nobody is ever happy with parking. It's just one of those issues where nobody's going to say, yes, parking is is great, not in any community that I've ever been in anyways. But we would like to get an understanding of whether or not this change makes people's perception of parking challenges any worse or better. And again, I think we all have, you know, hard-earned perceptions of of what will happen, but we don't have any objective data to say that people rated parking congestion as a, you know, you know, parking rated it as bad 78% of the time. And post-pilot project, the number was actually only 50% of the time, or it was 98% of the time. It would at least give us some baseline starting data about how people feel in the affected areas and that we could compare whether did our change impact how they feel about parking in their areas? So it's starting to move away from the subjective community sense that we have to at least an objective measure of people's subjective sense. So there is the the hard utilization data, just to get back to the the main question. Hard utilization data is something that does not exist today that would be enabled by this project in addition to that public sentiment pre and post-analysis that we would do.
Thank you for that, Counselor McGrath. I I do recognize your hand there. I I was going to continue with a question that I had, but based on on that response, if I might, well, it remains fresh in my mind. And I wanted to point out in this context, firstly, just a comment to Counselor Jono's earlier comment that we had given the RV parking lot to rafting companies. I I do not accept that that is is what happened. We we intentionally created an area for RV parking that was out of the downtown core. And the rafting company saw an opportunity and started making use of it, and we have not denied that opportunity. They are not the only ones that use it. There are businesses in Block S that use that parking as well because it's convenient. And so to the extent that the implementation and the communication plan both depend on some sense of immediacy in terms of of area and affected businesses, then we can expect that we are we are going to hear from those businesses that are directly impacted by by charging for that lot. And so in that respect, I wanted to turn just briefly to the public engagement plan. And Mr. Given, through you to presumably missing it on, but but perhaps it'll stay with you. I I noticed that there are three different levels of engagement based on the IAT2 model, beginning with involving the business community and key stakeholders. But then again, I I wonder who we will identify as key stakeholders. Will it be the rafting companies? Will it be vehicle service shops in Block S? Will it be home hardware? Because they will all be particularly impacted. They are to be engaged at the involved level, residents at the informed level, and then combination at the end at the consult level. So I just wonder why different levels of engagement for different segments of the community and how we will determine who are the stakeholders to be involved at the involved level? And then whether whether we have a plan set to go with that, or is that something that is still in the development stage?
Your worship, I will pass on to Ms. Nidon so she can respond more directly. But I I think at a high level, I would observe that this is at a stage where council can influence the direction that administration takes. And so if there are specific stakeholders, you know, you mentioned some as home hardware. Certainly, administration had thought about involving those that are, you know, directly impacted geographically speaking. And at a personal level, I had been thinking about the residents in the area. That's where my folks have been. Your suggestion about home hardware as a directly impacted physically adjacent stakeholder is
I think it's a good thing we have closed caption because the last thing that Mr. Given said was about home hardware being the being a state, a key stakeholder, and that's where we lost them.
Yes.
Hello, Counselor, your worship. I was just about to toss it back to Ms. Nidon. If if I cut out in the middle of that, I popped out of Zoom for some reason.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I think the internet at the Activity Center might be catching up with us, so hopefully you can hear me. Okay. Thanks for the question, your worship. As Mr. Given outlined, that that specific part of the plan is not 100% defined yet and subject to input from council, but also from the stakeholder group itself. We've certainly identified the Chamber of Commerce, who has been vocal already about wanting to be involved, and Tourism Jasper. We included that other stakeholders may include Parks Canada, but for example, they they may or may not have an interest in in being engaged at that level anyway, certainly being informed, I would assume. But whether or not they participate in a stakeholders committee, tho- those are the steps that we would take if council supports the plan. And as Mr. Given outlined, that stakeholders committee would probably be step one. And as also outlined in the engagement plan, the key performance indicators. So what measures are we going to use to see whether the project is successful or not? We plan to, excuse me, engage the stakeholders committee to help us determine that. So by speaking with our community partners, getting some input from council, i- is how we plan to define specifically which stakeholders would be involved.
Thank you for that. Counselor McGrath?
Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland, and thank you very much to administration for preparing this report and bringing it to us today. Where I sit with a little bit of mindful hesitation right now is I don't want to be critical of the report that's forward. But I also would have hoped to see this report and the implementation plans for the pilot project come from that committee. So that the committee would be initiated first, that we would consult with Tourism Jasper and the Chamber, as Ms. Nedon explained, that Parks Canada. I would also love to see our seniors represented at that table amongst those conversations. And I would love to have some residents involved in those discussions to represent the residents. I also, as a counselor, would love to be there. I just feel like I would be more confident firstly, engaging the community, deciding with the community whether prioritization for downtown parking or or lots and what lots, then move forward to step one and deciding what this initial implementation for year one looks like. So I'm I'm trying to find a way through this, not agreeing entirely with the way in which I see it, but also wanting more before we go to that committee and or sorry, less before we go to that committee and then have the committee report back to council on the way that they as a whole feel like this should be implemented.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath. Mr. Given?
Your worship, I'll just maybe, without getting into expressing an opinion, appreciate council members expressing their sort of views with the the challenges and would acknowledge Counselor McGrath's, you know, sort of chicken and egg challenge that there is here. You know, do we engage the community before we have a proposal? Or do we engage the community on a proposal that's concept that they can influence it? And both are legitimate, and I completely understand the reasons why we would want to do the the second of those two. You will see the proposed timeline that is a bit of the challenge that is in front of council and the community here. If we wish to move forward with the public process to select a service provider, and Ms. Melchuck has been developing the RFP, that RFP would need to be out for a period of time ending just at the start of April, we would need some time to identify the service provider. And during that time, we would be working on forming the stakeholder committee, which would help inform the development of those KPIs about what does matter when we do this. If we you know, shift around the schedule to doing that broad stakeholder consultation from, you know, from starting now and push into April, it may impact our ability to launch the project for the May 1st start date that administration is proposing. Certainly, we could launch mid-season or later in the season, but that would not be ideal, and that's why administration brought forward the recommendation that's here. I think the other thing that I would make in terms of an observation about timelines is that this should be viewed as a multi-year process where the community engagement in this year is significant and informs council's decision-making for future years. So it is not a a intense community engagement on this year alone. It is a long community engagement through the course of this project that informs decision-making for multiple future years.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions of information for council, pardon me for administration, from council? Counselor McGrath?
My question for you, Mr. Given, would be how detailed does that request for proposal need to be? Could it, could that be initiated at the same time that we're forming the stakeholder committee? And have that go out in maybe just how we choose our supplier or our platform of this mobile paid parking app without being so prescriptive as saying that this proposal would be for 100 stalls or 400 stalls? Is it possible for it to be more overarching to choose a operator of the paid parking platform? And then at the same time locally, start the stakeholder engagement committee and and start finding out the direction in which that's one supplier that we would choose would roll out paid parking in year one?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and I will ask Ms. Melmanchuk to answer specifically what level of detail needs to be included in the RFP for the service provider. I think that's the point of your question. I mean, essentially, do we need to tell the service provider in the RFP what number of stalls and what type of stalls we're going to be using? And I don't know the answer to that question, Mr. Melmanchuk may. I will, while she's coming on, just say that we could relatively easily bump up the formation of the stakeholder committee. There's no reason that that needs to start after the service provider has been selected. So there is no reason that the if council wanted to move that forward, that the engagement of stakeholders couldn't start sooner than is shown in the table in the report. Ms. Melmanchuk, did you have any information for us or insight on what level of detail is going to be included in the RFP for service providers?
Um, yes, so on that, I believe that what we would, for them to be able to give a proposal, they would have to know what scope we'd be looking at in order to give any kind of projections of the revenue and expenses that would be incurred within the the scope of the project. So I think that we should probably give them as much information as possible so that we receive as much information as possible.
Thank you both for that. Other questions? Mr. Given, I have one very specific question. The recommendation on the agenda is followed by alternatives. The first alternative being to direct administration to adjust the plan, and that could be either the implementation plan or the communication engagement plan based on committee discussion. Does committee in that context mean committee of the whole or the committee that is proposed in the engagement plan?
In this context, your worship, it is a alternative for council committee of the whole to consider. If council committee of the whole wishes to amend either of the plans, I guess the request from administration would be that that is A by motion and B specific. So an example may be the initiation of the stakeholder committee. If council wished to move the initiation of the stakeholder committee to an earlier date and without having to be specific about the date, but you know, direct administration to initiate the stakeholder committee at an earlier date, that would be specific, a specific motion that council could or that administration could act on and council could debate. If for example, council wished to amend the sites to identify different sites or a different approach, that is certainly possible. Council could make a motion directing administration to advance paid parking pilot project in a different site, as long as you describe that site clearly for administration, so we can understand what it is that's being proposed. And my suggestion would be that any of that discussion happen by motion, so we can be clear whether or not it's something that is endorsed or supported by a majority of council committee of the whole members.
Thank you. Counselor Butler?
Thanks very much. Just wanted to weigh in on the public consultation process itself or the public engagement plan that is attached to this. And to say that I I am overall very happy with what I'm seeing there. I think it's a a really well-thought-out plan. And I think it respects the motion that council passed back January, I think it was January 19th. So myself, I I would not be in favor of So myself, I, I would not be in favor of advancing. The broad questions about implementation of the pilot project to a committee. The community is represented here at this table and council passed through a motion in council. Um, made its intent clear to move forward with a pilot project and tasked administration with. With developing that, so I, I'd be very reticent about advancing. Or changing the proposed engagement process to the extent that we now look, uh, to. A, a community committee to define the public or sorry, define the pilot project. I think it's our responsibility to do that, so. I'm quite happy with what I've seen with the public engagement process. I'm in support of moving forward with a. Uh, and I know we're not here to debate, but I am in support of moving forward with the pilot project. But the piece that's missing for me is. I would like to see a demonstration, some demonstration from administration that there has been some forethought given. To some of the potential. Problems that we know we're going to encounter, and that's why I brought up this question of. How will parking in the remainder of town, how will regulation of parking in the remainder of town, especially downtown, maybe be altered or changed? So I'm not ready to move forward with the pilot project exactly as it sits, I would like to see. Again, a, a little more evidence of integration into regulation of. I- in the rest of downtown, and if that was shown to me that we've thought about that and that we're ready. To deal with that, then I think I could be convinced to go forward with the bones of the plan as presented.
Thank you, Councillor Butler. Councillor De Mota.
Okay, I've written down some thoughts, so I'm trying to take the debate out of my line of questioning to make it a little more efficient. We had conducted in the past, I believe it might have been twenty fifteen. Uh, an overall transportation study in the community, and I'm wondering. If any of the decision-making process with this presentation that we have here today was taking ahead of any of those suggestions. And, um, although, uh, from some councillors on, on this council, I didn't like the overall. Study that was done. Um, I'm not always in favor of throwing out the baby with the bathwater. And they said that I think there are a lot of good pieces within that study that. Uh, could have helped us throughout this whole process and, and I feel because there was kind of like this overall feeling of. Maybe, uh, discontent with, with what came out of that study. That, uh, everything was just kind of pushed aside and, um, we've paid for some work. I, I think a lot of, uh, you know, what we could look at may have already taken place in that study and. Could save us some time and, um, doing some of this litmus testing. Um, that we're about to engage on over, uh, an extended period of time where I think that we could be saving. Some time and money and, uh, and maybe some stress, I'm not sure. But, uh, I, I was just wondering if any of that was. Considered. Mr. Given, uh, Mayor Ireland, through you to Mr. Given.
Thank you, Councillor De Mota.
Yes, thanks, uh, your worship, uh, you know, administration is obviously aware of the transportation master plan and it's objective to make the most of existing part. Uh, parking facilities, um, you know, the overarching goals that were in there were to, uh. Establish dedicated purpose designed RV parking, which council, you know, as discussed, the Hazel Lot is, uh, that opportunity. Um, the discussion that, uh, was mentioned earlier about encouraging more turnover in the business district is a part of. Uh, one of the other goals, as is increased use of underutilized parking facilities and reduce circulation of impact. Uh, circulation impacts on the community, and so some of those are somewhat in conflict. Um, if we, uh, encourage turnover in the business district, that could reduce circulation impacts on the community. Or sorry, that could increase circulation impacts on the community, and that's what we're looking to assess. So we are aware of the transportation master plan and its goals. Um, I think what we're trying to do is develop some local experience of if we try this, then what happens? Um, so that we can inform decision-making going forward, uh, to advance the goals in the transportation master plan.
Thank you for that. Um, and just to be clear, um, Councillor De Mota, I am, I'm not trying to avoid debate. I'm trying to get us there and just remind council that at this stage, um, we are not, and we should never be debating with administration. We are just seeking further clarification and information from administration. So that council is then prepared to enter into debate amongst itself. So I am anxious to get us to debate, but we will need a motion first. Um, I'm sorry now in that I lost sight, but, uh. I believe I saw Councillor McGrath, um, I did see Councillor Wilson, did I also, I did not, so that must have been Councillor Jono. Whose hand I saw fleetingly, so Councillor Jono and then Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to hear you say that we cannot. Comment or debate or whatever, but I, I would like to offer a bit of a. Summarization as to why we came here, we, we, parking is a complex matter, it's not simple. And we have heard from three presenters here last summer, uh, various alternatives. And then when this was presented to us that there's going to be a, a, a proposal. With a view of alternative revenue, raising alternative revenue. I think that that objective is now disappeared from here. We're looking at seeking data, but I. Like the mayor asked for, what, what outcomes are we hoping to get out of this? I don't see a clear outcome, and I don't see that it's going to be generating. The revenue that is being proposed here. Uh, I, I'm sorry, I'm debating this, Mr. Mayor, but I, I, I do have to, I do have to say something at this early stage because I think it's, it's, uh. Uh, i- i- it's important. In my opinion. If you want to start with a parking proposal, you have to start with the areas of high congestion. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jono, and again, I, I'm not trying to, uh, avoid or, or quash debate, I encourage debate. I would just like a motion to debate, um, and yet we, we don't have a motion before us yet. Um, Councillor De Mota.
Excuse me. Well, I, like, we're at committee of the whole and I'm just, I don't like being handcuffed to a motion when. I've always felt that committee of the whole could be a spitballing session with council and. I'm getting information and requests, uh, from, uh, administration, so. Because it's not as formal, I, I don't see. The necessity to have a motion on the table to have these discussions. If, if that's the way, uh, procedure takes us, then, then so be it. But, uh, you know, I, I'm enjoying the conversation here and, um. You know, I, I do want to say on the side though, I'm. I'm impressed with, uh, Mr. Given's, uh, idetic memory or, or what I'm seeing because I, I don't know up to how you can have so much knowledge. So far and so many little things that have taken place in, in the short time you've been here, so. Um, you know, in even regards to the transportation master plan, I, I'm impressed with the, the detailed information you have. Um, you know, contributed already. So getting back to my train of thought, um. You know, we, we've been. It, it, it might have been suggested that, that council could participate in suggesting broadening the, the parking. That's been, uh, recommended here for the study and stuff, but here again, we're. We're asking people that aren't experts in the field to be making recommendations to something that doesn't have a lot of. Uh, I don't think, uh, a stable platform, because, you know, if, I'm sorry, I'm debating, but. I just don't have a choice here. If I was going to open up a hotel. I wouldn't be asking a bunch of people what their opinion was, I would ask my neighbors and stuff, you know, like, you know. What do you think about this going on in here and stuff, but for the actual operation of it, I would like to have. Somebody with proper knowledge on what are the, the first steps, what's worked in the past, what doesn't work when you're starting to do this, so. Uh, you know, just to, to make it easy for me to understand, I, I think we're doing a lot of unnecessary steps. And, uh, and like other councillors have said, uh, I don't understand what, you know, for me, what the, um. Incentive is if I'm coming to this community with an RV vehicle or just a car in general, or I can go and park in other areas. And why would I go and choose the, the, uh. The less concentrated place where I need to pay as opposed to free parking elsewhere. So that's, I'm trying to wrap that around my head too, uh, for further discussion. Uh, I do have other things, but I've spoken enough at this point, so thank you for your time.
Councillor Wilson, I, did I overlook you? I, I did recognize you earlier and then I didn't come back to you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, I'm in, I, I really, uh. Like what I see here, but I, I would like, uh, uh, an increased option as well. Um, on, uh, presented and, and that would be a paid parking on, in the downtown core, it may or may not, um. Be the motion that we pass, uh, but I think we should have that option because it, as, uh, Councillor Butler. Had suggested, uh, it may not have to be paid, but it has to be deterrent for, uh, and, and pushing people towards the, the. The, um, the parking, um, areas that, that, that could be, uh. That could be, uh, reduced rates over in the parking areas, um, but I think there has to be some type of push. Um, to, to get them over to the less desirable places. Um, and so I, I honestly, I'm, I'm usually, uh, support something that's, uh, you know. Full on right away and, uh, we'll, we'll see the repercussions and the, in, in the year, in the, throughout the, uh, season. And we can, uh, fine tune it after that, but, um, so I'd like to see the option at least, uh. Going full on with, uh, with paid parking on, uh, the street, on the streets and maybe a reduced rate in the. Um, in the, uh, parking areas.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson, uh, Councillor McGrath.
I have one question for administration, the lot that's east of the lot that intersects with Hazel. Is that municipally? I don't want to say owned, but is that lot under our jurisdiction or is that a Parks Canada lot?
Your worship, just for clarity, Councillor McGrath, do you, the, are we talking about the Hazel RV lot and something east of it? Or the lot that in a, uh, diagram is called the Canot Lot?
Yes, east of the Canot Lot.
Yeah, so there is a breakpoint between what is, uh, municipally owned, quote unquote, um, and what is owned by others. And so the, uh, the, the point of that lot, if you start to look at it as it gets pointier towards the east. It becomes, uh, I believe either parks or, uh, the railways, uh, lot, so there's a differentiation there.
So just for clarification, if we were to say at some point in time, bring paid parking to all lots. Would that lot also be applied to paid parking or would that be exempt from paid parking?
It is someone else's property and I don't believe we'd have the authority to make it paid parking.
Thank you.
So I, I think that we have exhausted questions of administration for information and clarification. It seems to me, although we don't have a motion, that, um, there is a growing, um. Attitude that, um. Committee of the whole might be prepared to direct administration. To carry out a paid parking public engagement plan, more or less as presented. Um, but an implementation plan, which is other than as presented. And so without some parameters around that direction, um, I don't know where we stand. If, if we are going to, um, proceed with direction. I think we owe it to administration to give some relatively clear direction on what the implementation plan. Might look like if it doesn't look like the plan that has been presented. Councillor De Mota.
Well, personally, I'm not satisfied with anything that's in front of us and, you know, and that's. And that's not to take away anything from administration, I, I love the detail in the report and I like where it's going. I'm just not satisfied with any of it, so whether, you know, with, with the discussion on going forward with, uh, public consultation. And even with, uh, you know, the, the existing rollout presented, I'm just. I, I can't, I don't want to, uh. Make a recommendation to council from committee of the whole on information that I'm not comfortable in giving direction for, so. That's kind of where I'm, I'm at, I just, I, I just don't think that we have a solid platform to work from.
Thank you. Um, sorry, Mr. Given, I was going to respond, but go ahead.
Yeah, your worship, I just wanted to be clear, uh, and appreciate, um, you know, the intent today was not that committee is recommending anything to council. To, to be very clear, uh, committee is giving direction to administration on what actions to undertake. Uh, if no direction is given by committee, that administration would, I essentially be in a pause situation where we would undertake no action. Um, but council itself has approved moving forward with a pilot project in twenty twenty one. Um, and now we are at the stage where since that action has been approved by council. Uh, I think it, committee can direct the activity that it wishes administration undertake. If the committee does not give administration direction on what specific actions he'd like to undertake. Then the project, uh, would not advance, uh, because committee hasn't A approved administration's recommendation or B provided alternate direction.
And, and I would, um, suggest if a councillor is prepared to make this motion, from what I have heard. Um, that committee of the whole direct administration, um, to return with a revised implementation plan. That better addresses anticipated impacts on parking in the downtown core. I, I think that's where the discussion is going, but I'm not sure. Councillor Butler, you had your hand up and then Councillor Jono.
Thanks very much, Mayor Ireland, I was actually going to propose something very similar to what you just said. I think that there is some consensus developing. Here, and that's why we're sitting here, um, and going around and around on this that. I think we feel like collectively, like we want to see at least one of two things happen. Because there's, there's real concern about the very tentative nature of this pilot project. And a lack of perhaps attention to possible. Or nearly certain outcomes where people are gonna. Look at these two paid parking lots as an invitation or a suggestion to don't park it. They're gonna go and they're gonna look for other places to park. And they're gonna do that in the downtown area and a lot of that downtown area is even open to long-term unfettered parking. So I think there's maybe some consensus that we need to go in one of two directions. One might be to expand the pilot project to include more paid parking as Councillor, um, Wilson has suggested and Councillor Jono has suggested. Or at least to address some of those, um, outcomes and ramifications with, uh, more. Um, clarity and specificity in downtown parking regulation, if it's not charged. So that we can show the community that we are anticipating where, uh, the, the fault lines might be here and. And proceed accordingly, so I would like to see administration come back with either one or the other or some combination of options. That we either do expand the pilot, so it seems a little more consistent and rational. Or that we show that we've addressed some of those potential outcomes with more regulated parking downtown. And that, I'm just wondering how council feels about that nature of direction.
Thank you, Councillor Butler, Councillor Jono and then De Mota and then Councillor McGrath.
Uh, Councillor Butler began his discussion about the possibility of making a motion, or not sure if he wanted to do that, but, uh, I prepared to make a motion that, uh. We moved to a pilot project with a view of studying primarily the parking in the more congested area, which is downtown. I believe, I strongly believe that's where it should be, that's where the problems are, that's where we get all the complaints, that's where we get all the abuse. We should be concentrating on that area, so the pilot project should primarily. Focus on the downtown, whether it's, uh, paid or signage this year as a, as a pilot project. I'm not sure, but to, to start with the other lots without having any. Focus. To the downtown, not the best word, but, uh. I just believe that you have to concentrate on the downtown firstly, thank you.
Councillor, um. Councillor, um, Jono, you did put that forward as a motion. I'm just trying to get, um, wording and I, I think, um, your motion would be to direct administration to move forward with a pilot project for paid parking focused on the downtown core. Is that the essence of your motion?
Yes, that is, uh, primarily on the downtown core and that exclude and not excluding other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that, that is a, a motion. Um, I think they had, uh, Councillor Demota next and then Councillor McGrath.
Well, if that's, uh, the motion on the floor now, I, I was kind of, uh, enjoying what the three of you were piecing together between yourself, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councillor Butler and, uh, Councillors Jono. I, I thought that, uh, with giving some direction to administration, um, having said that, I'm wondering if, if this might through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to Mr. Given, would it take a lot of time and energy for administration to look at other municipalities that have already gone through a lot of this work and, and maybe gather some of the successes from other resort communities such as, uh, where parking, paid parking in, in the, in the more, uh, highly congested areas that are already occurring and, and take a lot of the work out of this and, and stress. Um, you know, Whistler, I, I know that Banff has, uh, gone through some of this. Um, even with restricted parking in Canmore, I'm not sure, you know, if, if we need to be doing a, a whole lot of work or, or even like I said, the litmus testing, um, to gather information when some of that work could have already been done for us.
You, your worship, if I may, to Councillor Demota's question about whether, uh, administration could undertake, you know, considerations from other communities. Administration is aware of the discussion in other communities, uh, you know, and at least from, you know, in some measures, personal experience, uh, ongoing discussion. I would note that paid parking is a discussion right now in Ja, uh, sorry, in Banff. Um, and their context is somewhat different than Jasper's, uh, given their close, closer proximity to Calgary and just the slightly different nature of the communities. Um, I will say that, uh, the experience from other communities has informed, um, the types of technologies that we're considering using. The, the style that we're considering using is similar to what is used in off-street parking lots. Uh, actually, I think broadly across Whistler, uh, similar sort of style of that mobile paid parking. So while it isn't made explicit, uh, you know, in terms of a table in, in Banff, they do this. And, you know, Canmore, they do that and in Whistler, they do this. Uh, administration has at least broadly considered, uh, the state of the discussions and the state of technology from other communities. Um, appreciate that if council watched us to undertake a more detailed study, that would be something that would take a little bit more time. But it is, uh, considered in the recommendation you see.
Thank you. Councillor McGrath?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. For a motion to be agreed upon by myself, I, I see us, as Councillor Demota expressed, piecemealing something together that, um, I believe we're all stating our values and, and trying to combine our values to come up with a plan. And I, I see something along the lines of requesting administration to come up with a second option to include all downtown street stalls, all parking lots that we have jurisdiction over, with this focus on steering congestion out of our downtown core. I would like to see consideration specifically placed on residential permits, seniors' stalls, parking fees to incentivize lots over on-street parking, and to include the underutilized S-block parking.
Thank you for that. I'm, I'm trying to, um,
Was that a friendly amendment?
Well, yeah, or, well, not, not necessarily amendment, but, um, or a friendly amendment, um, in terms of Councillor, um, Jono's motion, which is before us. So I, there is, there is a lot more there than is in, or was in Councillor Jono's motion. So um, if that is recorded, um, by administration, we, we could have a a motion to amend Councillor Jono's motion to read as Councillor McGrath has stated it. If that, if that is your intent, Councillor McGrath, I, your, your opening words, um, were a little less than, than, um, clear to me. So if, if you could just repeat that.
Yes, and, and if council, you know, I think I have the intention of adding a consideration to the S-block parking that we created last year as I drive by and it's empty and it seems as though it's not filling the need in the community that we suspected it would. Um, if that's too deep to, to get into right now, that's okay. We can talk about that at a later date, but I see us, I see this very complex as others have stated, and the complexity of this probably can't be dealt with in the next few weeks. This is, you know, a parking strategy for the community of Jasper is lots of work and it's, it's years of work, as Mr. Given stated. This isn't short term. But, um, for me to be happy moving forward today, I would like to see administration return with a second option to in, for next week's regular meeting, if, if that's the intention to, to bring it forward next week, which I believe it is, to include all downtown on-street parking stalls, all parking lots that we do have jurisdiction over, with a focus on steering congestion out of our downtown core, with consideration placed on residential permits, seniors' stalls, and parking fees to incentivize lots over on-street parking. I can take out the S-block, because that might be too, too controversial to agree to in this.
Uh, thank you for that. I'll, I'll return in, in just a moment, um, to that and, and how it relates to Councillor Jono's, um, motion. I see Councillor Butler has his hand up. So go ahead, Councillor Butler.
I understand that Mayor Ireland's discomfort with debating outside of the motion now on the table, but, um, again, we're in committee and maybe what's, it's what we need to do. Um, I agree with the intent of most of what Councillor McGrath is raising. The problem is that what Councillor McGrath is describing is really not a pilot project. Um, it's, it's, it's the whole thing. And we previously agreed that we would proceed with the pilot project because I think largely we all understood that to build out an entire community-wide parking strategy that respects all of the considerations that Councillor McGrath just mentioned was beyond the scope of what we could likely accomplish this year. And so we have asked administration to proceed with a pilot project. And I think that the, the spirit of that is that it's less than what we likely expect the community would end up with in future. So I, I wanted to come back to the suggestion that we could ask administration to come back to us with an adjusted pilot project that either expands, um, paid parking to include the full CBD as, as some councillors had suggested, or at least addresses the inevitable spillout of parking into the CBD with, um, a greater degree of regulation than we have right now, which Mr. Given suggested had not really been considered and that he's acknowledged maybe ought to be and could be. So without complicating things too much, I think if we asked admin to come back with a new, a more nuanced plan that considers one or the other or both of those two options, that we could probably have a pilot project that we could be happy with for the coming, um, season and understand that we're still gonna have a ways to go in the future with addressing some of the broader implications that Councillor McGrath has mentioned.
Um, thank you, Councillor Butler, Councillor Demota. I, I see you. I wanted to return though first to, um, the motion, um, put forward by Councillor Jono and then the, the follow-up comments we've heard on that. And to you, Councillor Jono, um, I am, I am supportive. I think that your, your motion is general enough, um, to encompass essentially all of the other elements in any event. But the, the difficulty I have with the motion and what I might propose as a friendly amendment, although perhaps it's, it changes the, the tenor too much. But you specifically, um, indicated that, um, council directs or committee of the whole direct administration to move forward with a pilot project for paid parking primarily focused on the downtown core. I would prefer, um, a motion that directs administration to return to council with, um, a revised implementation plan, um, for a pilot project primarily focused on impacts on the downtown core. Um, so it captures what you're saying, but not to necessarily move forward except in the sense of developing the plan and returning to council with it. So, right, I, I don't want to move forward with a pilot project, um, that we haven't seen yet. So, uh, with that, with that nuance to yours, I could certainly support that motion.
I appreciate the assistance that you're providing, Mr. Mayor, in clarifying my, uh, uh, rookie motions in this complex matter. So I would, uh, I agree and concur with, uh, those changes and, uh, fully support that proposal.
I, I thank you for that. And then I, I return to, to council and Councillor Demota, I think I, I seen your hand, um, but for clarity then, um, to encompass it all in, in short form, um, that, um, amendment which Councillor Jono has accepted, uh, his motion would be that council or committee of the whole direct administration, um, to return to council with a revised implementation plan for a pilot project for paid parking primarily focused on impacts on the downtown core. Um, without specifics, I don't know whether that, um, accomplishes all that other councillors are hoping to accomplish or accomplishes too much. But in any event, um, that is a motion that we can grapple with. Um, Councillor Demota?
Well, I was going to, uh, speak after, uh, the motion was voted on, um, because I, I wanted to, uh, comment on a nuance that Councillor McGrath had brought to the table. Uh, however, just for clarity on this particular question, is that including what is in the presentation as of today? So downtown core, and this is to expand on, on what, um, uh, administration's brought for us at this moment. That's in the downtown core.
It, it could, but the, the focus being on impacts on the downtown core. So, um, there will be impacts, whether we address downtown core directly or indirectly as, as the present plan indicates. But more of a focus, um, on impacts on the downtown core. Are there, is there any further debate, uh, that we are at the debate stage, um, on the motion? Uh, Mr. Given, you can't debate, but I will, I will hear you in any event.
Your, your worship, no, absolutely not debate. I just want to ensure that administration, uh, has enough clarity to properly interpret the motion, um, that council's debating. Two questions. First, uh, to return the motion, I think we heard you say to return to council with a revised, uh, pilot, um, was the intention, uh, to return to council or to council committee of the whole would be one question that I would have. Um, I would advise that, uh, returning to council, uh, for next week, yeah, would significantly impact the quality of information that administration would be able to develop for you. My advice would be that we return to council committee of the whole in two weeks' time. Uh, just secondly, in terms of, uh, addressing, you know, or focusing on the impacts of the downtown core, I wonder if all council members are of the same understanding what that might mean. Uh, I heard one view expressed that addressing the impacts on the downtown core could simply be through increased regulation, uh, in, in those on-street parking spots. I also heard, uh, a view express that it should be to move forward with paid parking in those on-street parking spots. And it would be helpful to administration if we had some clarity on, um, is council wishing a report that considered those two different alternatives? Is council leaning to, you know, asking us to actually know, just do the regulation side or no, just implement paid parking on downtown streets? Uh, I just want to ensure that we, uh, know what council's asking so we can deliver on your request.
Thank you. And, and I, I appreciate, um, that additional nuance. And my intent, um, was to return, turn, be council sitting as, uh, so yes, I said council, um, but I also in its capacity as committee of the whole. Um, and with respect to the question of moving forward, I thought that that had been removed from the motion so that it would be, um, simply returned um, with an implementation plan, um, rather than move forward with it. But I, I appreciate, um, your concern about the, that detail, uh, but I, I think it is not, um, necessary that, that we move with a particular plan, but that you return with a plan. And whether that would be, um, other administrative options as had been suggested, um, to, to manage parking in the downtown core or instituting paid parking, um, we can wait to see the, the revised plan, I suppose. It, I didn't see that as directive to necessarily implement paid parking, although that could be the option. And, but I leave that to, to council. That was my understanding of where we had got to. Yeah, Councillor Jono?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems to me that the first objective that was in implementing a parking, paid parking was to generate revenue. So I would suggest that we do move, uh, with a view of collecting revenues in, in the summer, uh, on a pilot project to see which direction the community is really gonna go. Without charging, I don't think you're gonna get the same picture as when you do charge. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson?
Well, between the two, I think I would, uh, lean towards, uh, paid parking, but I would entertain, uh, um, other, uh, d- deterrents is, but, uh, but really, yeah, I would say let's push forward on paid parking in the downtown core as an option.
Is there sufficient clarity now for administration, Mr. Given? Not that you have a motion yet, but.
Certainly, uh, I think the understanding is that we are to return to council committee of the whole with a revised implementation plan that focused on the impacts of the downtown core. I would expect that we would deliver, um, potentially two scenarios. One that addresses the impacts of the downtown core utilizing regulation, um, and one that would, uh, focus on the impacts of the downtown core utilizing paid parking in the downtown core. And then council can decide which of those two, uh, they wish to proceed with.
Councillor Butler?
I think I'm happy with the direction we're going. I don't mean to split hairs, but, um, the cons, uh, one concern I raised, um, I just want to be sure that we have encompassed it with our thinking around the downtown core. My concern has been that if we enforce paid parking in the two lots we've discussed and don't do anything with the remainder of Canot Drive, most of which we might not consider downtown core, but which is currently essentially unregulated. We're gonna turn, um, both ends of town into a huge free parking lot. And that's not the downtown core. So if we need to expand the wording of the motion to include downtown, downtown core and cannot drive, maybe we should, or if administration just understands that that's what part of the concern, then I'm satisfied to move forward. I hope I was clear in that. Let me know if I'm not.
Again, adding the words and cannot drive, um, Councillor Jono, it was your motion that we were working on. You're fine with that. So. Councillor Juno, it was your motion that we were working on. You're fine with that. So just for clarity. Councillor Butler, I think that can be accepted as part of the motion. All right, I, I see nothing else. That would suggest that I can call the question. I just wanted to make an observation, although we haven't dealt at all with the public engagement plan in the same level of detail. It has occurred to me that there is an opportunity under the part that says engagement with business to draw in individuals and that perhaps need not be individual businesses. And to the extent that the RV parking lot continues to be a focus of paid parking, I do worry about the impact that will have on residents who use the off-leash area. And they are, I think, as entitled as a business to be represented, to represent, to be represented on the issue and have their concern brought forward. So I just, I just throw that out there for administration as they get to the point of implementing the engagement plan that there is residential use of that lot for a particular purpose. And we will have residents who will let us know. I think in strong terms how they have been impacted. So I just leave that, not that it's part of the motion, but it seems to be assumed in the motion that we are happy with the engagement plan. And I think that has been reflected in the discussion. With all of that, is councillor Juno, pardon me, councillor McGrath.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Just to be sure before I vote on this motion, will we have an opportunity at a later date? I'm assuming we will, if this is coming back to committee, to speak about important issues like resident passes and seniors parking in the community as well as fees to incentivize parking over in lots over downtown areas and cannot drive.
I believe that we will. It will come back to committee of the whole in any event. Excuse me. And I think all of those issues remain to be discussed, but in the context of perhaps a different implementation plan.
Yeah, thank you.
If there is nothing else, I will call the question. I'm not going to repeat. To understand that it is a direction that administration return to committee of the whole with revisions to the plan. All in favor? Opposed? There is one opposed, that motion is carried. Thank you all. That's perhaps is the meatiest discussion we will have this morning. It's now after eleven. It might be an appropriate time to call a brief recess and then we will proceed with agenda item eight point two and hopefully make it through the rest of the agenda without another break. It is now eleven oh six, so I'll give us nine minutes and we can return at eleven fifteen. So thank you all. Enjoy a brief break for comfort and we will reconvene eleven fifteen. It, it is an interesting and, and I think useful adjunct to what we had, although I did notice Mister Given that when you said your worship, it came out Russia. So go figure.
Yeah, maybe just not quite there, not quite ready for prime time yet, maybe.
No, although I have been around about as long as Putin, so maybe, maybe that was intended. All right, we are all back. I will call us back to order. We are at agenda item eight point two code of conduct by law. Again, I will turn that to you, Mister Given.
Thanks, your worship. This ideally will be fairly brief. We are just looking to kick off a process here. If council's in agreement, it came to administration's attention that our current practice for establishing code of conduct for council members is not in alignment with current provincial legislation. In twenty seventeen, the province passed an amendment to the MGA which required municipalities to establish by bylaw a code of conduct for elected officials. Jasper has proactively had a code of conduct for council for elected officials, but it has been as an appendix to our procedure bylaw. A seemingly small difference, I think the overall intent is there. But it, in consultation with provincial officials, it is clear that the municipality in order to be compliant does need to establish an actual elected official code of conduct bylaw. So the recommendation you see in front of you is that committee of the whole direct administration to undertake this work and bring back a draft bylaw to council committee of the whole for future consideration.
Thank you, Mister Given. That is appreciated. Councillor Demota.
Well, I don't mean to be confrontational at all, but I just, I want to know who is policing this and, you know, and I understand that with, with a new council coming up, this will be important to have going forward. But I've also brought up things that are required from council to be, you know, in alignment with the MGA and, and those things haven't been addressed yet too. So this is just adding something else or bringing it forward. And I don't know what sets priority, but, you know, I appreciate that it's here. We have lots of things to address. I just feel sometimes things are brought up and maybe they don't want to get discussed though. And I think maybe that might have to do a little bit with the public engagement process, which we're still not compliant with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McGrath, did I see your hand?
I didn't have my hand up, but I would love to, to give councillor Demota some advice because I know that that's really important to you councillor Demota. And since Mister Given's arrival, we have an incredible tool with the motion action follow-up list. So I think that you do have the right as a councillor to bring up that at any point in time. Bring it to a motion, get council to vote on it, and it will get put on that motion action follow-up list, which is an excellent tool that we have now and that we can implement to bring the priorities of our own notices to this table and to have it followed up with. So I think that you do have a tool.
Thank you. Councillor Demota, have a quick response if you will, and then councillor Butler has been waiting.
Yes, and I appreciate that and, and I understand that and, and I'm familiar with the process and, and I appreciate your support and encouragement. I just felt that when I was treading in those waters, that I was maybe adding things to administration's portfolio or workload that, you know, maybe not be necessary. But if other things are coming up, you know, on top of things that have already kind of been suggested or, or requested, then, you know, that, then I will go that way. But you know, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Butler.
Thank you. Moving forward with the issue at hand, this did come up very early in our term. I think we were all told in our little course that we went to that that was a new requirement to have an actual bylaw. And I remember we talked about it and then sort of just didn't really get to it. And I'm very happy to see it here. I think we should direct administration to go ahead as recommended. I don't think it would be helpful to defer to a new council. Code of Conduct is Code of Conduct and it should, it should stand the test of time. Each council shouldn't be sort of crafting its own code of conduct. That wouldn't be a very good code of conduct. So I will make that motion, the committee of the whole direct administration to develop a draft code of conduct by law in accordance with current provincial legislation and present at a future meeting.
Thank you for that motion, councillor Butler. Any further debate on the motion? Councillor Butler.
I'll only say that to a great extent, I expect this is relatively procedural. I think we have quite a good policy with respect to this and it's really just elevating it to a level of bylaw as is required. I don't want to presume that administration will take the policy as written without adjustment. I would expect them to go over it and take a pretty good look at it and make recommendations. But I would hate the community to think that we simply didn't have a code of conduct. We have. It's just not written into a bylaw.
Thank you for that, councillor Butler. And I am certainly in support of the motion. I, I would have previously argued, I think, that being a schedule in a bylaw meets the requirement and the intent of the legislation, but the legislation has changed and there are some additional requirements in a code of conduct bylaw that are not in ours, including a complaint mechanism. And so we have to address those in any event. And I, I'd fully agree that we should do it and we should do it before the next election, hopefully, well before. I also note that there is now a requirement for a review of the code of conduct bylaw at least once every four years. So I think putting it in place before the election then positions incoming council to do the same. And you get that rotation, you get it late in the term. So it's updated always before an election, which I think is, for us is going to be an excellent thing. But I do agree that in terms of, of real content or conduct, I'm not anticipating any great change from what we, we have had in place for many years on, on this council. Any further comments with respect to the motion? I will call the question and all in favor. There are none opposed, that is carried. Thank you, Mister Given. As you forecast, that was a fairly brief item, which takes us to agenda item eight point three recreation facilities reopening. And again, I turn to you, Mister Given.
Thanks very much, your worship. Obviously, I'll be supported by Miss McNabb in any of the operational considerations. I'll provide the brief overview. Administration is here with a recommendation that committee direct administration to reopen the following recreation facilities as soon as practicable. While following all provincial health regulations, the fitness center and bouldering wall by appointment only and the aquatic center for youth swimming lessons, one-on-one swimming lessons and household bookings. As council is aware, on March first, Alberta Health announced that low intensity fitness activities are now permitted at fitness centers by appointment only. And so there are a couple of caveats there. The fitness center is not widely open, but the province is providing some, some narrow opportunity reopen. Administration pretty immediately, as in the next morning, I believe, Miss McNabb said, had people knocking on the door, hoping to get in early in the morning. And there is, I think, a misunderstanding about the level of changes that would need to be required. Specifically, administrations identified that the new provincial restrictions require three meters of physical distancing, which was previously two meters of physical distancing. That would limit the number of people able to participate to between six and eight people per booking based on the space available in the fitness center. And two participants on the bouldering wall. The other challenge is the province's lack of definition around low intensity fitness activities. We've had a few discussions about what might be intense for one individual, may not be intense for another individual. I'll leave it up to everybody to decide, you know, your skill level or what level of intensity is right for you. But the province did say low intensity. And so administration is advising that free weight amounts would need to be reduced to ensure that people stay at low intensities. The cardio equipment would be limited and there would need to be observation to ensure that people are moving into high intensity activity areas. On the swimming pool side, administration's recommending that we do follow the lifesaving society guidelines of six participants to one instructor. So while there is a suggestion that could be up to ten people, the lifesaving society in, in regular instances suggests that should be limited to six participants to one instructor. And administration is presenting some tentative timelines based on the complications of recalling staff. Ensuring that equipment has been moved and repositioned in order with the physical distancing requirements. And that the aquatic center specifically is, the water is refilled, water line repairs are undertaken and heat exchanger repairs are undertaken. And the water testing is completed. So those are all items which would impact the timelines that you're seeing proposed in the report, which are that the fitness center could open on March seventeenth tentatively and the aquatic center could tentatively open on March twenty ninth. You see the financial implications. This kind of reopening is available within our current provisional budget that is based on the twenty twenty budget. And you see the deficit that administration observed during the twenty twenty opening, which was under not exactly the same, but similar conditions. So for all those reasons, administration is recommending the council provide direction that we do reopen the fitness center and bouldering wall and the aquatic center under those limitations as described. Miss McNabb's here for any operational questions that you might have. I will turn it over to council.
Thank you, Mister Given. Councillor Demota, councillor McGrath, councillor Wilson.
Okay, I'll ask the question, so I'm not going into debate and then just a little bit of follow-up by ask question. I'm just wondering how this is different from how we're operating the arena right now and how we didn't need council's direction to go with that. I went back and looked at previous minutes to make sure we hadn't done that. So to me, if, if, like you said, if this is just part of continuing on with the twenty twenty budget, you know, we, we've got, again, I'm using the term today, a lot of minutia that I feel that council's being drawn into that. I think if it's just part of the operational, you know, forecast of going forward and what's needed to do it and you can do it safely, I would be just grateful that you were bringing that to our attention. And this is what we intend to do. I, I don't know if me personally, if you really need council's direction to go ahead and do that. So that's just my point of view. I'd like to hear what the rest of council say. But how is that different from, from opening or what we've done in the arena?
Thank you, councillor Demota. Mister Given, you wish to respond?
Yes, yeah, councillor Demota, a fair question. And to be, to be very transparent, administration did debate whether this should come forward to council. And in the end, we chose to bring it forward because there is a, a subjective element to this. Really, the question is, given these limitations and the uncertainty of some of the limitations, is council interested in opening under those conditions? Because we certainly can, as administration put forward in the report, we certainly can open. I think that it is possible that the community may be disappointed about the amount of limitations. And we just wanted to be sure that council was supportive of moving forward under these conditions. You know, if council said, no, you know, don't open until we can really open up fully, then no problem. Administration is fully prepared to open up under these conditions. And we just wanted to check our, our sense because certainly you were the ones that are most plugged into the community about their desires. And if council's comfortable that this would meet the community's desire, then we are able to open under these conditions.
If I may follow up, I just wanted to say I'm grateful for the level of detail that's there and, and all the precautions that need to be in place. And the work behind what was presented. And I think that's great. For me, I think if anyway, again, I don't want to speak for the rest of council, but I think if, if the stuff is there, I appreciate coming forward with the information. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Councillor McGrath.
Well, thank you very much to administration for bringing this forward today. I know many residents are really, really excited to think about resuming their wellness regimes. One piece of information that I'd like to just more or less share with the community as they receive this information from this decision is that when we, differing from the previous regulations, is that when we do reopen, the, the change that I feel as a, as a private business who operates in, in a similar realm is that we must wear masks. And that was confirmed last week by Dr. Hinshaw. So even while resuming low intensity exercise three meters apart, we still must be masked, which must change with the aquatic center being exempt from, from that for obvious reasons. But I think it's important for the, the community to know that that when you do get back into the gym to lift your low-intensity weights, that you will be expected to wear a mask while participating. So just a piece of information that I, as a private entity, have taken into consideration. But I, I still think it's really valid to and important for us to reopen our facilities as soon as we can.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath. Counselor Wilson.
I, I too am in favor of opening with whatever levels we can. You know, very important activities that are, that we can engage in to kind of assist us in, you know, getting through COVID and everything that's entailed up. I guess my question though was in regards to hours. And I know this is quite a bit different in scheduling than the previous time we opened. Now, you know, for example, I'll take, you know, you know, this would be personal, I guess, my, my family. If I was going to book the aquatic center or a spot in the aquatic center, what hours are, can I book? Can I book an eight o'clock spot? Or is it restricted to the 10 to six or whatever hour we were operating previously? And I think because it's so restricted, I hope that we can, you know, adjust it where we can offer extended hours. But again, that's my, hopefully there's a question in there for you.
I'm sorry, was there a question in there for Ms. McNabb? Go ahead.
Yes, we are looking at longer hours, especially because we're going to have reduced numbers. So longer hours so that we can accommodate more people through the different times. Pool bookings would be more to the evening, so likely starting at about one o'clock in the afternoon so that we can get swimming lessons in for younger kids. And then be able to open up the evening part from six till nine thirty for potential bookings from households.
So really though, it's, I think those were those hours that we were operating previously. We're not extending them because at one o'clock to sit or the evening, we didn't have anything in the morning at all.
And there is potential for doing morning swims. If you're looking at earlier times, it really will be based on, on the number of bookings that we get and the availability of lifeguards. Right now, presently, we have one lifeguard that can, can accommodate this at this particular moment. And we're hoping to be able to pull back another one. So that's what we're looking at. So ultimately, the hours are going to depend on the staffing that we're able to retrieve.
And similarly to the activity center, or sorry, to the fitness center.
Fitness center will be likely from six thirty in the morning until nine thirty at night. Because the front desk is easy, we can accommodate the front desk staff much easier than we can the lifeguards with bringing back for hours. So we do have confirmation of people that we can pull back for the front desk.
Thank you both, Counselor Butler.
Thank you. And thanks, Ms. McNabb and Mr. Given for the report. However, like Counselor Demota, I'm confused and confused as to why this is coming in front of us today and in particular, why a motion is necessary. It's coming in committee of the whole. We directed that both of these facilities be open back on September 1st. We didn't subsequently direct they be closed. We provided direction in September that these facilities and the arena be opened. And then, of course, we're forced by circumstance to close. But administration did not come and ask council about opening the arena, but now is asking us to direct that we open these facilities. I think administration has adequate direction and should proceed accordingly. If administration thinks it needs further direction, I can only see it as a matter around finances, which I am most concerned about, and I don't think we can deal with that in committee. So I'm just confused about what, why this question is coming now in the way it is and what really the ask is. There's some financial information given here, but again, nothing relating to the other facilities. So I'm unclear on what I'm being asked to direct here and would appreciate any clarification as to why this is coming and what the specifics of it are.
Miss, Mr. Given, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, your worship, to Counselor Butler's question. Yes, you know, Counselor Butler, administration is obviously aware of the direction that was given previously. It was our interpretation that that previous direction was really focused on budget and council's approval of additional operating subsidy in 2020. If council's current direction, you know, and council's understanding is that administration should always seek to open facilities to whatever extent possible under current provincial regulations, no problem, we can absolutely do that. It was just not clear to me that that direction had been given previously, that, you know, administration should always strive to have facilities open to the public no matter the limitations, you know, to the extent possible allowed by the province, for example. If that was the, if that is council's direction, then, then that would make an open and shut case on every example or every provincial stage, and they are moving quite quickly. The arena, in that case, administration needed to put ice in anyhow to test the new systems. We were going to have a cost there and there was not really a significant incremental cost to opening the facility for public use as allowed. And so that's why it was a, an open and shut case. This one, it was my judgment that it was less open and shut and that council's previous direction was not explicit that your default position is to open facilities whenever possible. And if that's, and if that is council's direction, that would give us the clarity that we need to move forward on every sort of stage of provincial opening. And we'd be happy to take that direction if council wished to give it today.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I do want to return to that, but I defer first to Counselor Jurnel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the report. I do support reopening of the facilities. But one of the things, item that came up in the report is something that I will comment on. And I know it is going to sound a bit critical and administration doesn't like to see it there, but it's on the financial. If your first bullet point says, we presently have dollars available to open the facility based on 2020 budget, more clarity, please. How much? I think we need to know that, maybe that council. But it should be clear. In the next line, you have revenues for our last opening from September 21st to December 13th is estimated at sixty-seven thousand and the expenses are estimated at. This happened a long time ago. Now, I understand that you are appropriating the user, the passholders and their fee and so on and so forth, you're appropriating all of that. But the public doesn't see that. And the public's going to view this and say, what do you mean? You can't tell us what your revenue was five months ago and six months ago. So it's not specifically to do with this, but I think it's more to be guiding in the future. That administration has to be more clear with the financial data. This as presented leaves a lot to be desired. I think the public is going to be saying, sorry, I don't understand why this cannot be more clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jurnel. I wanted to return to the, the issue about overall direction to administration from council with respect to reopening. And I searched in recent days but could not find a clear statement of the principles that council adopted some number of months ago when we discussed a strategic approach and a principled approach to reopening facilities. But my recollection is that we landed on four important principles, some of which are recognized in this report, but they aren't identified as such. But firstly, it had, any reopening had to be in compliance necessarily with provincial regulations. So that was the first hurdle. Secondly, I think we had to be able to provide a safe environment within the context of the provincial regulation. Third, by recollection was that there had to be demonstrated demand. And so this report talks a bit about demand, although I'm not sure that it is much more than anecdotal. And I would have thought maybe we would monitor demand in it in a more scientific way. And then thirdly, a sense of, of cost effectiveness for the reopening so that it would not be carted launch to reopen if it was, if the cost of reopening and additional staff was going to be fully unwarranted. Anyone can correct me on those four principles. But that is my recollection and subject to those principles, I thought we had many months ago and obviously, long before your ten, tenure, Mr. Given, council had landed on those principles. And I would have anticipated any reopening, either request or announcement, to simply indicate that the principles were, were recognized and followed. And this is where we ended up. Mr. Given?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. We did have a discussion about this previously and the team was able to find a document that reflected the COVID recovery and relaunch strategy from council. In that, and this may or may not be the, the document that you're talking about because it does talk about the relaunch strategy guiding principles, which are described as follow provincial health and safety directives and guidelines, review municipal services and facilities in relation to provincial guidelines and ensure necessary and appropriate measures are developed and placed to operate safely, anticipate and demand for service, anticipated or actual demand for service or facility use. Is, it, it just says that that should be a consideration. Decisions for service resumption and facility opening will be fiscally responsible. So there, I suppose it is a question, you know, I think this is in alignment with that direction from council. The question is, what is council's definition of fiscally responsible? And what is council's definition of anticipated or actual demand for facility use that justifies opening the facility? You know, administration has reported, you know, that, that people were knocking on the door and calling and we have received inquiries. And I'm sure we have some kind of total of how many required inquiries those are, but they are not customers who have signed up for something that they don't know whether or not it's opening. So it's a little, it's, it is a bit challenging to the best of our ability, that's the anticipated demand for service. And the question, I think generally is, given the limitations on the number of people that will be able to use them, council and administration should expect that the financial return will not be what it would be under normal circumstances. And so it is a bit of an open question of what is fiscally responsible? The most fiscally responsible decision would be to keep the facility closed, to be blunt. I don't know that that is the community or council's expectation or definition of fiscally responsible when mixed with the, the desire to allow people access. And so that's why we, you know, are here for this sort of direction and maybe a little bit more definition on those principles from, from last year.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given. I am very much relieved to know that, that my memory at least can recapture those, those four principles. I, I cannot remember when exactly we had that relaunch strategy session. I went back to notes from July, so maybe it was in June. But I, I do appreciate that and I appreciate that there, there is a degree of ambiguity and uncertainty in all of it and a degree of subjectivity. So I appreciate that. I am just suggesting that in, in the report, had it been delineated in the same fashion, which obviously staff looked at, so I, I, I fully appreciate that. I, I thank you for that. And I'm happy to have this back before us. In these circumstances, I am certainly prepared to vote in favor of the recommendation that we go ahead with reopening. Counselor McGrath.
Thank you. I'd just like to take an opportunity to, to address even the, the question of fiscal responsibility when it comes to culture and recreation services. And, and I think way before COVID, there, you know, I sat at an AOMA session on culture and recreation and parks. And it's, it's understood across the board, across the world, that culture and recreation services will always come at a cost. It, it won't ever balance a budget. It's, it's what you're giving in exchange for what, and, and it's not going to be seen at the municipal level. And it's not going to be seen at, you know, this local level. But where it will be seen is for mental and physical health of the future. And, you know, it might not be noticed for 50 years amongst Albertans. But those who are participating in wellness and recreation right now and who are supported in, in recreation and wellness now will, will certainly live a healthier life long term. So it's not necessarily going to be seen here, but it's super important. And well before COVID, the costs well outweighed the expenses that, or sorry, the revenues were, were far less than the expenses of operating anything in the culture and recreation realm.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath, Counselor Butler, and then Counselor Demota.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. On the, under the two bullets relating to financial in the request, it states that revenue generated during the three months that the facilities were open was sixty-seven thousand dollars. I, I like counsel, Jurnel, I trust that you don't mean it's estimated. I trust that we know that by now. And then it says the cost of additional staffing is estimated at seventy-two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight. So like, is what did, is that over and above regular? If I read that sort of at face value, I take it to mean that we ran the operation for nearly three months with a net operating deficit of five and a half thousand dollars or something. Um, I would be ecstatic if that was the case, but I frankly doubt it. So again, I'm unclear what's being asked and I'm unclear what, what the information that is being given for us to base our decision on actually means. So could you clarify what those numbers are meant to tell me?
Sure. Well, first, before I go to Ms. McNabb for some of the detail on, on the actual operational costs that we've experienced last year and what we'd see this time around, I, I just would make the observation that administration is still compiling the year-end financials, going through the detailed audit. And so we wanted to ensure that there's a little bit of space there. These are as best as, as available currently. So appreciate that they are not specific and could be presented better. Would fully acknowledge that in alignment with Counselor Jurnel's point and, and yours, Counselor Butler. Ms. McNabb, I don't know if you can provide any additional detail to whether the, that was a full cost accounting version of what happened in 2020, or whether that was just the user revenue over the incremental costs of opening, which may have been different than the general sort of underlying operating costs, Ms. McNabb?
Well, that was the, the cost minus your manager of the aquatic center because the manager was already in place trying to work through facility issues and, and reopening and all of that. His wage is not part of that seventy-two thousand dollar expense, but everything else is. And the sixty-seven thousand, why it's estimated is because there was still financials going in and out of those accounts. That has not been finalized, so that's why I put estimated. I didn't want to put something on there that, you know, may show up as seventy thousand or as sixty thousand after passes have been given back, et cetera, from that account. So until that is finalized, I wanted to put an estimated value on that.
Thank you for that. Counselor Butler, follow.
Thanks for that clarification, Mrs. McNabb. So I do, you raised an issue that I also have a question about where you have referenced here that passes will be used, but drop-in fees will be. But drop in fees will be an option, and I'm just curious about the status of the situation with passes, because um, I signed hundreds of refund checks. And everyone I know who had passes for those facilities has been refunded. So do we have? Um, and I understand the reason for refunding. But my impression, I've gained the impression that we don't have a lot, if any, open passes that we refunded them and we're kind of starting over, which was probably good planning if that's the case. So do we have a lot of open passes now that have already been paid for and where where people are expecting to use them or have we refunded most of them? Where do we stand on that?
Go ahead, Mrs. McNabb.
We refunded all the passes up to and including September. Um, and the reason we didn't go any further is because we assumed we were going to be open um permanently at that particular point. So people have purchased passes between September and December, and we have not refunded those passes. Those have just been extended to the opening. And with regards to the the um drop in fee versus the passes, we're going to give people the opportunity to pay drop in if they don't want to use their pass for limited use, because they're only going to be able to do light weights. They're only going to be able to do shortened workouts. So they may want to leave their pass on a hold so that it can be used at a later date and then just pay a drop in rate, because they're only going to come, you know, once a week now instead of five times a week because of the limitations. So we wanted that to be left as an option.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Council Demota.
Thank you for that. Um, you know, uh, I go back to like weighing the the, even though we're not um making the decision today, but in weighing my my votes for decision, you know, um, I'd like to check three boxes for my filters and and, you know, and and usually in order, it's, is this um, you know, good for the entire community? The second one is, what are the costs? Whether they're financial? Um, you know, social or or even the overall health of the community, or the cost of making decisions or not making decisions. And then the other one is, is this the right thing to do? So um, I know in the third box that I want to check, this is the right thing to do to go forward this. Um, is it good for the entire community? I'm not sure, but if it if it creates an overall, uh, you know, better health benefit and and you see those, um, you know, uh, indirect costs, I guess, uh, or indirect uh health benefits, then I I think that yes, I could check that box off. And just for clarification on on the financial cost, um, you know, uh, I'm I'm grateful that Counselor Butler had brought forward the the um the cost for additional staffing with seventy two thousand and what? Um, I want to assume that there's going to be additional costs because we're in COVID related uh conditions that aren't just uh due to staffing and um are we clear on what those might be? I know that uh Mr. Given had mentioned that, you know, if it's just basically on 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 finances, this probably isn't the best thing to go forward with. Uh, because it it we're going to be incurring costs, but um, that's one thing that I I think I'd like more clarification on if if additional staffing is one thing, but there are other costs with uh, you know, um, materials and changing of water and and all this other stuff that we don't actually see here. Um, is it a greater burden than what we're actually seeing in that in that five thousand dollars split, so to speak?
Mr. Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, Your Worship, uh, no, uh, Counsel Demota, you know, the the costs really are around staffing um, and around, uh, you know, potentially increased custodial service. Um, and and really the financial aspect comes around the reduced participation. It it, you know, uh, recreation facilities rely on having as high a volumes as possible to minimize the public investment in the subsidy, you know, and and so really, you know, the increased costs are are uh staffing. We don't necessarily see that there's significant staffing above and beyond what would regularly be happening other than that increased custodial. Um, there's not a need for additional physical enhancements or changing of water or anything like that. Um, there are those increased staffing costs associated with rearranging the fitness center. Um, you know, which is during nonoperational time, there's no revenue coming in while we're moving around the the, you know, the weights and that kind of thing. So there really are those um those operational costs associated with labor that are not being recouped to the extent that they were previously when we could welcome more users.
Go ahead, Counsel Butler.
Okay, just for the the benefit of discussion for the rest of council, I I appreciate that, Mr. Given, and thank you for that information. So um, I'm I'm more inclined to try to see where it goes and to see what kind of sustainability it has, even though we know it's 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 not a sustainable course. But, you know, last spring, we had to make some really hard decisions uh, based on a lot of information that we didn't have at the time, and a lot of it was anticipation. So if we have to take uh drastic measures again, when it comes down to our budget going forward for twenty twenty one, we have some concrete evidence and and, you know, at least we might have the the uh argument that, you know, we would like to have this, this and this in the community, but at what cost and where's the money going to come from? So if we can't uh fin- financially support uh, some of our services, we have to be able to back that up with our experience now. And and I think that um, although I don't want to try and fail just to prove a point, I think for the benefit of the community and the health and welfare of some of the people that need these services, we should try to open up and then as the province, um, you know, uh, changes the restrictions that we keep going forward, and then we we can see when we have to finally make a decision on the budget. Are we going in an okay path? Nothing is going to be perfect, but if we can sustain it and then come out of this with some sort of, uh, you know, with less skating, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, uh. Administration did come forward looking for direction. Uh, I'm not sure that I have heard yet um a motion for direction to reopen. But I would certainly entertain that, Counsel Wilson.
I I would be willing to make the motion uh that um administration move forward with reopening um the fitness and aquatic center as presented. Um I think that might do it.
It might, yes, uh, Mr. Given?
Yeah, Your Worship, appreciating the discussion that we've heard today. Um, you know, if council uh wished to, you know, Counsel Wilson's uh motion could be interpreted very broadly, that you just wish us to open facilities whenever practicable in alignment with provincial health regulations. And if that's the intent, that would that would actually be very helpful. Uh, if we did include those other two bullets, um, it might get overly specific. So just to make sure that we're we're all working under the same intent, Counsel Wilson, if your motion was intended to lock those off, that is perfectly acceptable and fine. Um, and that would give us clear direction, that whenever we can open a facility, you know, when it's practical, uh, in terms of timelines and staffing requirements, callbacks and everything else. And if we can do it in alignment with provincial health health restrictions, then we should do so. That that would be really helpful. Um, just wanted to make sure that uh that that was the intent that of the motion that you're making.
Yeah, that would make sense to me.
Counsel Butler?
I can't support that unless there is at least a statement. Um, and the bold point about doing so fiscally responsibly is um included. I'm not even sure I find, I I find that this motion is not even in order, Your Worship. Um, we did direct back in September that these facilities should be open. We didn't subsequently direct that they should be closed. Administration has said there's money in the budget. We have a budget. I think as it stands now, administration is, has all of the rationale that needs to open again. No question was asked about opening the arena, and we have every expectation that this is always being done in a fiscally responsible manner and within budget. So we have earlier direction to open the facilities. We have a budget. Um, I just don't understand really the question. We've had quite a few comments about the difficulty of operating in a fiscally responsible matter and the need perhaps person definition around that. But we don't have the numbers in front of us to to gauge that. So I just don't know what I'm voting on.
Thank you for that, uh, Council Demota.
Well, and alternately, like, what if this motion gets defeated? What happens then? Are we allowed to come back to it within a year? I I I'm kind of on side with with what Counselor Butler is saying. I I think this, it it's just thank you for bringing this to to council. We understand the implications and go forward. And if we can't go forward any more than, and if it's if it it's at a higher cost that we can't afford, then we'll have to address it then, but um yeah, I'm I'm okay with going with the same route as as we've been going with the arena.
Mr. Given?
Yeah, Your Your Worship. Um, so administration is comfortable if council is uh, you know, in essence, intending to delegate authority to make decisions about reopening facilities to administration. We absolutely can deal with that, and we, of course, would do it uh with uh full respect for provincial regulations, health protocols, and the general sense of of fiscal responsibility. Of course, we would do all three of those. Um, and so if that's council's intent, I think Counselor Wilson's motion basically gives us that broad direction. Uh, I think that it is, you know, the discussion from June of last year that was prior to a second closing of facilities. Um, it's reasonable for administration to just want to confirm that council's direction is that delegation of authority to us to make decisions about reopening facilities. If that's the intent here, um, you know, and you know, Counsel Demota, Counselor well, Counsel Demota is certainly, I think I heard you say that that was, you know, your your openness to or an expectation that administration would do that. Uh, I'd suggest that Counsel Wilson's motion really gives us that, and we would, you know, um, act accordingly.
Counselor Demota?
And I respect that. And you know what? And and uh, maybe contrary to what what Counsel Butler is saying, I'm going on past um, experience here, and I think that it's probably the right thing for administration to do, and I appreciate that. And and I think it's the right thing for us to do, because if we do get any political pressure on this and we come back to administration going, hey, how come you know, this is causing this and this is causing that? You could say to us, hey, listen, we went forward with the direction that you gave us and it's and it's um and it's recorded. So I I think that's the smart thing to do, and I think that we should go ahead with that. Uh, thank you um to Counsel Wilson for making the motion.
I would um like to propose um to Counselor Wilson um, what I hope might be seen as a friendly amendment. And that is that committee of the whole direct that administration may reopen the recreation facility. So it is still a a permissive approach. Um, as soon as practical, while following all current provincial health restrictions and while following the principles for relaunch adopted by council on whatever date that was. So that that then says, yes, you may go ahead as long as you are following the principles that council adopted last spring, and that includes fiscal responsibility. As unclear as that might be, it's it's no less clear than low intensity workouts. So you you have to deal with some uncertainty in life, but I would simply like um a motion that reflects that council has adopted principles for relaunch, and we haven't ever deviated from those. So administration may legitimately reopen, but there is a process to do that and principles to follow. So I would, I would simply add that that wording um to your motion, if you would accept that, Counsel Wilson.
Um, yeah, I I would accept that.
So that is a slightly different motion, uh, just incorporating the principles. Um, those four principles that we discussed earlier today and that council adopted last June, uh, Counselor McGrath.
I think I'm I'm just looking for a little bit of um confirmation from administration that we will still hope to get back to say, regular operating hours. I know the importance of early morning swim times for the seniors in the community, and there's some of us that are not in school during the day that would really hope to use the programs. And I'm curious if, you know, that fiscal responsibility piece really limits you with expanding the hours, as many residents have asked me um, for the gym, for example, to have increased hours from the gym from what it was in the fall. I just want to make sure that that's not a limiting factor in the motion that's being presented.
Yeah, thank.
Go ahead, Mr. Given.
Uh, well, no, I was just gonna say that our interpretation of Counsel Wilson's motion would be that we have fairly broad operating latitude, um, keeping in mind those principles uh from from June of last year. And so um, I think administration, you know, is of the understanding that council wishes to have people in as much as possible. Uh, if it's practical and fiscally responsible to do so to, you know, to open up uh additional hours, that's something administration can consider. Um, so yeah, we would take this as fairly broad uh ability to maximize use for the community uh, to the extent that's, you know, that's administratively possible in terms of getting enough staffing and and other constraints addressed.
Thank you. And I thought I saw a hand flash. Was it Counsel Demota? No. All right, just one further question from me, um, Mr. Given, and I I appreciate that it it is a bit of a moving target. If something similar comes back to council, I preferred the way um things were presented in in the fall when we dealt with um the potential cost of reopening the arena. Um, the way the numbers were presented, we could sort it out on a on a bit of a dollar per day basis. And we know that for recreation facilities, um it is about a very roughly a a fifty percent cost recovery ratio that we deal with. That may not be exact, but it's it's somewhat in that range. And we can figure out from the the overall tax subsidy, how much we spend in a normal year keeping um, say, the fitness center and the pool open. And if if that goes up by another fifty percent, uh, maybe that is in these um trying times fiscally responsible, um, when we put the value that we do on on physical and mental health of our community. But it's easier, from my perspective at least, to judge these things based on on that sort of incremental increase. So if it costs us typically a thousand dollars a day to keep that facility open and now uh with reduced revenue because of the the nature of the separation and increased cost because of the nature of staffing, it's now going to cost fifteen hundred dollars a day. Well, then I can put that in perspective. So if it can be presented in that way, I would appreciate it. And then finally, uh, my last point on this is that it seems to me that these incremental costs are some of the costs that are um covered by the most funding. And if there is still most funding available, if we if we can configure um a presentation that shows what the incremental cost is in advance, then we have a sense of whether those costs can be recaptured from other orders of government, uh, because that what I think is the intent of of the most money in any event. So yes, there are going to be additional costs operating in COVID time, but there's good reason to do that for mental and physical health, and there is an avenue to recoup some of those costs. So if if we can get presentations that that allow the numbers to be presented in that fashion, I think it makes work for all of us a lot easier. If there is nothing else, I will call the question, is there clarity both on the side of council and on the side of administration with that motion will mean? Counselor Butler?
Thanks very much. Again, still don't really understand why this motion is before us today, in particular in committee, when we didn't deal with a similar question with respect to opening another facility. But we are where we are, and I said I would be in favor of it if there was wording around fiscal responsibility, and there is. But I want to point out one thing to all of us, which is that we have a budget. It's an interim budget, but we have a budget. And administration has to operate within the budget. And my assumption throughout this entire conversation is that that's what we're doing. If I found myself as a counselor in a position where some period sometime down the road, I was being told, well, council said to open it. And so now we need a bigger budget because we've spent this money to open it. I would be really unhappy because everything is predicated on the budget that we are operating under. That is where the buck stops. And I am absolutely certain we're all clear on that. Said that because I want anyone who's watching this meeting to be clear on that, that we are operating under the constraints currently of the same operating budget as we followed for twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Anything further? I will call the question. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Jono, or are you just getting your vote in early?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo Counselor Butler's comments. The guiding light should be the budget. Now, I I commented earlier on the fact that there lacks clarity on the dollar amount. So that lack of clarity indicates that we may be deviating from the budget. And but that that's going to be OK because council approved this this motion. So I I want to see the facilities reopen. I don't want to, you know, delay this in any way. But the financial information is not clear. If it's not clear to us, it sure is not going to be clear to the public because they don't have the day to day workings that we have here. And you've got to leave the public in a very frustrated mood.
Thank you, Counselor Jono. I think it is understood, I hope it is by administration, that this motion presumes that reopening will be in compliance with the interim budget. There can't be a question about that. I I think that I see I see an acknowledgement from Mr. Given that that is the case. So I I appreciate those comments. I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? There is one opposed that is carried. Thank you for that, Mr. Given. We are about to launch into agenda item eight point four. That may take some time. It is now twelve seventeen. We have a bit of a day left for us, considering that we have the strategic priorities meeting at one thirty. Does council have a sense of how it wants to proceed for the day? Should we take a a bit of a lunch break right now and then reconvene, get through the rest of this agenda and launch into the the next session? Or would you like to go finish this and then perhaps delay reconvening? While we have a lunch break, Counselor Butler?
Thank you, your worship. I would actually suggest that we consider deferring this item. I don't see it as tremendously time sensitive. I think it may itself require a fair amount of discussion, and I wonder if it doesn't make sense that we simply bring it back two weeks hence. But I wouldn't, I would be prepared to make that motion, but wouldn't want to do so without checking in with administration on potential implications of of doing that. Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor. I'm not sure whether I froze it there. My screen now seems to be good again. Counselor Demota and then Mr. Given.
Well, I'm not sure if that's another motion from Counselor Butler, but you know, what is that saying to administration? So they're not allowed to open? Then if we defer this, I just, I know we have to, there, the question on the table is, we're here for lunch. I'm just confused on on that. That idea to defer.
Counselor Butler?
I'm not sure the question. We already dealt with the motion relative to opening the facility. The question in front of us now is whether we want to deal with the accessory dwelling units. And I'm suggesting that that conversation can be deferred to a subsequent meeting.
Forgive me. Thank you.
And I will go then to Mr. Given because that question was was posed to him and my apologies, I I had indicated that we had a meeting at one thirty, but I am wrong at that that is next month's meeting, not today's meeting. So my apologies, but Mr. Given, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. I thought I might have some report to develop between now and one thirty. To Counselor Butler's question about the impact of deferral, certainly administration is not driving a timeline on this. And there's, I guess the impact is that in the fall of twenty twenty, the Parks Canada had put forward a letter with some requesting some response to a couple of specific, I think, four specific questions. To date, council hasn't provided a formalized response. I know this was a subject of a discussion at a recent intergovernmental meeting where council did commit to providing some kind of formalized response. I think the intent with the recommendation was not to solve the issue today by any means, because that certainly would be a lengthy discussion. The intent was to ask whether or not council wishes administration to do some homework and present potential course of action, or the council wished to undertake the work in developing the courses of action. So today, we weren't looking to draft a response to Parks Canada. But we were looking to understand whether we could assist council in doing some of that work and bringing something to you, or wish whether you wished us to schedule a strategic priorities workshop so that council could develop a course of action. So really, this is a, this is a scheduling question. You know, do we bring this back to a committee of the whole in the future, or do you want us to schedule a special meeting so that council can do that work?
Thank you for that, Mr. Given, Counselor Butler.
Well, when Mayor Ireland referred to a meeting at one thirty, I immediately left to the conclusion that I had missed a memo and that we had a meeting at eleven thirty, only to discover that Mayor Ireland was incorrect. So I I that's the spirit in which I was suggesting you defer this. But having said that, sure, I think we should deal with it. And I spent some time reviewing this, and I would actually like to suggest a hybrid of the recommendations from administration. I am very happy to see this coming back. We engaged in work collaboratively with Parks Canada to look into some of these difficult questions, and we received, well, a report was produced, and we never have actually received it and brought it forward onto a public agenda, and it's entirely appropriate that we do that. So I think that we should receive the report today for information, and that places it on the public agenda. It's already there, of course. My suggestion would be rather than deal with the question is, should council look at direction, or should we ask administration to offer suggestions? That we do that in sort of a hybrid fashion. These are complex and difficult questions. They are intergovernmental in nature. And therefore, I think appropriate to deal with at a committee level. And I would actually suggest that we consider striking an ad hoc committee. By ad hoc, I mean, I just mean, you know, one that would last only as long as it takes us to look at these questions. And the council form a committee to look at these in conjunction with administration and consider options to bring back to full council at committee as recommendations. And I'm just wondering how both administration and council would feel about that approach. As opposed to one or the other approaches that are suggested.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Counselor Jono?
Thank you. I acknowledged Counselor Butler's comments and agree. I think that's a great idea. This is very complex. I would like to suggest a workshop before we go into any kind of open meeting of debate or something like that. There's a huge learning curve to be absorbed as to the potential of these things. And I would like to see an an opportunity for an educational session on this matter. Not that I'm not aware of it, but I think that not that I don't understand. I just want to make sure that all the participants are clear on what the outcomes are.
Thank you for that. Counselor Butler, when you suggest an ad hoc committee, are you suggesting an ad hoc committee of the whole or say, appointing three members of council to sit with administration in a workshop setting and then come back to council or committee of the whole with recommendations?
I'm suggesting something along the first lines that we form a committee of a subset of council, though, having said that, I have no specific number of counselors in mind, or certainly don't object to any or all counselors being involved. But I was thinking of a suggestion as you just put forward, and I agree, I like my thinking was sort of a workshop format to sit down and consider some of these things in in the detail that they deserve.
Thank you for that. I I too find myself implying to that direction. I am struggling only whether that would be a subset of council or whether it should be council as a strategic priorities group, all of council doing it. But with that, with that one duance, I I agree that council or counselors sitting with administration in a workshop setting to hammer out some of the details is is probably the best way to approach it. Counselor McGrath?
I too agree with that approach and and think that council as a whole would be important to be there as we all come with our unique and diverse perspectives and viewpoints.
Any other comments from council? I did hear from Counselor Butler, although not quite in the form of a motion, that we ought to receive the twenty nineteen PHA and ADU report for information. I I agree that we should do that. And that leaves aside the the question of the the content of an ad hoc or strategic priorities group meeting in in a workshop setting, but we could divide those questions. And so I would suggest that perhaps if you're comfortable doing so, Counselor Butler, that you do make a recommendation that committee of the whole receive the twenty nineteen PHA and ADU report for information, just as a standalone motion?
Yes, motion so made. Thank you.
Any debate on that motion? I will call the question. All in favor? Thank you, Counselor Demota. So that is carried. There are none opposed. So that report then forms part of the record and has been received. So for next step, let's tackle the group that will meet with administration as an ad hoc body meeting as required and only for that long. We have some discussion about whether that is a subset or all of council. Counselor Butler?
I propose we just make it all of council, and obviously, it doesn't impose any particular expectation on all counselors to involve themselves if they don't wish to. But the intent of my suggestion was to be open. And the only reason I'm suggesting it, I I think it should be positioned as a specific committee to deal with accessory dwelling units and private home accommodations report and not broadly A or D Strategic Priorities Committee, because I think it's important that this be dealt with as a standalone issue. So that's my suggestion.
Counselor Demota?
I like that. And whoever can attend should attend. And I think that that would be good. And to have that separate, and I I think having that separate discussion, but being open to all of council who can or want to participate is I'm sure that that many of us would like to, and then maybe some of us can. So.
Thank you. I'm just trying to drop some wording around a motion. All right, far from eloquent, but what I would suggest perhaps is that council direct administration to convene with council sitting as an ad hoc PHA and AUD review committee in a workshop setting to review the twenty nineteen PHA and ADU report. Is that sufficiently obscure? Counselor Wilson?
I I would suggest you swap the ADU and PHAs because primarily this was an ADU discussion and report. And I think PHAs got tacked on to it. So we can definitely talk about PHAs, but it was, it was put forward originally as accessory dwelling unit movement, rather PHAs, but PHAs did get wrapped up in it.
You are correct. And the title of the report is in that order. I was reading from the request for decision that's before us, and it just reverses those those letters, but understood. But in any event, the intent is that council will form itself as a ADU PHA review committee to meet in a workshop setting with administration to review that twenty nineteen report. Is that what the intent of of the discussion has been? And is that satisfactory, Counselor Butler?
Being in a fundamentally lazy frame of mind, I was more than happy to sit here and listen to the TikTok music while you crafted the motion, but having coerced you into doing that, I'm happy to propose that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Any further debates on the motion? And turning to you, Mr. Given, is that sufficient clarity for administration? You'd be happy. All right. I will call the question in. All in favor? Thank you. There are none opposed that is carried. So we will leave it to administration to to convene at time for that newly formed ad hoc ADU PHA committee to meet with administration to review the report. So thank you for that. That takes us to Lemonade Day. An attachment in our correspondence. We have in past supported this, I didn't see anything attached. Indicating the level of support. Does anyone on council have a? A recollection how? The extent to which we supported. Lemonade Day in the past and is there a desire to? Support. Lemonade Day in the future. Councillor McGrath.
I do not remember specifically what we provided in the form of sponsorship in the past, but my children had. An opportunity to participate in this in. In two thousand and nineteen, it must have been, and it was remarkable, though I think Mrs. Robbins was correct when she said the parents. Of my children's age anyways, did a lot of the brunch work, it was, it was really amazing and it was a great opportunity and I think that. There was five booths that day in two thousand and nineteen and that only encouraged others and many children missed out on it last summer because of us being heightened during COVID nineteen and it not being permissible, but. But this is so exciting and something that so many more children from two thousand and nineteen will be excited about this year. And I think that we should move or move forward with sponsorship, though I don't know exactly what would be expected. Sorry, I'm saying that and there's a, a package attached here and you'll see the first little. The first page of the attachment is my son Diniyan from his little. Lemonade stand, but I think we should move forward with a sponsorship of. Of. The request, though I can't see exactly what it is, but anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars offering support to community futures. West Yellowhead, who in turn supports all of us in our community.
Thank you for that councillor Wilson.
Yeah, definitely a great program. Sorry, I'm just trying to relay some information from Nancy Robbins, I don't think we've supported this financially in the past and I think that's. Too bad, I'd like to, it's, it's a great program that builds young entrepreneurs and. We should put some community money behind it, I. I'm just trying to get some information on what other communities such as in the region have. Have contributed and I feel like we should at least match that. One second here. Well, Nancy Robbins is suggesting that. Five hundred dollar request is on the table. But I think. Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry to be distracted here, so all of the other regional partners have committed five hundred dollars to the project and I think. We could at least commit that, so I think that should be our request at this point.
And would you like to, well? I suppose this is properly a matter for council, I suppose, that sort of a decision, but committee of the whole could. Make a motion to recommend council at our next meeting to. Contribute five hundred dollars if that's a motion that you would make.
Sorry, and further to that, I really apologize that behind the ball on this one, although we could. As. The municipality Jasper sponsor the local entrepreneur of the year contest award, so other, other. Sponsorships have been spoken for already, so I would like to make the motion that the municipality of Jasper. Commit five hundred dollars to sponsor the. Lemonade Days Local Entrepreneur of the Year. For two thousand and twenty one.
Okay, and just for clarity. Your motion is that committee of the whole recommend to council that we sponsor at that level. For that. All right, so simply a motion to recommend to council, because I think it is a decision that council, sitting as council must make. Any further debate about that motion? Great, I'll call the question, all in favor? Any opposed? There's one opposed that is carried. So that is simply a recommendation that will be brought forward next week as council. There is no other correspondence on our agenda today. Council representation on various boards upcoming meetings. I can tell you I have a museum board meeting tonight. We'll see how that goes, there's nothing I need advice from council on that, councillor McGrath.
This evening I will be attending a library board meeting where Mr. Given is coming with us as a guest to our board meeting. That's at five PM and tomorrow I will be in attendance at the community conversation. As well as Thursday, there is a municipal inclusion committee meeting from two to three PM.
Thank you. Councillor Demoda.
I have a culture and rec meeting this Thursday at ten thirty AM. Yeah, if anybody wants me to bring anything up there, please email me, text me and I'd like to bring it up for discussion. For the. Greater group and then I'll report back on our meeting next Tuesday, thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Upcoming meetings councillor Butler.
Thank you very much, I have a Evergreens Foundation meeting Thursday where we will be. Dealing among other things with the annual budget and I'd also like to report that yesterday I attended a small celebration and photo opportunity. For the inauguration of the new seniors bus, which I'm thrilled to report is in service and thanks. I feel so thankful to the Greens Foundation, the staff of that organization and in particular, I want to mention Cornestel Tisony's name, who has just. Driven this. And I also want to again thank the Jasper Senior Society, who of course operated that service for many years, contributed to a large seed fund to. Toward the purchase of the new bus. And I will remind this that we do have a new request for an annual contribution. I think it stands at only ten thousand dollars to make. On a continuing basis that service available to the broader community and not only the residents of Alpine Summit, so that is all good news and I was just happy to pass it on today, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Butler and you can get work as a ventriloquist, I think you made that presentation without once moving a facial muscle, at least on my screen. Anything else upcoming? All right. Pardon me, upcoming meetings that is and in upcoming events, we have a budget committee of the whole meeting. For the morning of March twenty fourth. And the mistake I made earlier, strategic priorities committee meeting at one thirty. But more than a month from now, not this afternoon, councillor Demoda.
Yeah, sorry, I was just trying to sneak in there and I just wanted to keep councillor, council and our CEO abreast on the HR committee. We are meeting. And we have discussed some approaches on the. The CAO performance review process as well as council remuneration, it's an ongoing thing. So we're continuing to meet and nothing to report just yet, so but I'm just letting you know that we probably will be having another meeting within this weekend and we are progressing.
Thank you for that. Agenda item thirteen then, we have an in camera meeting scheduled for today. Before I call for a motion to go in camera. I can advise staff and members of the public who are watching that when we revert to open meeting, there will be. No further discussion, we will simply revert to adjourn, so I thank everyone for their attendance. To this point in time, I wish them all a good day and. Council, we can entertain a motion to go in camera and I would suggest that. It might be appropriate to take perhaps half an hour now. To get some food, if that is sufficient time for everybody and then we can reconvene in camera at perhaps one fifteen, is that acceptable to all? I see some nods. Oh. I see Mister. Given with his hand up and something flashed on my screen, a chat, the motion action list.
Yes, your worship, if it pains me to delay the break to lunch any further, but the motion action list is a standing item on the agenda. Administration would like a motion just sort of confirming council heard our updates. Very, very briefly, the target date for the utility rate model is changed and we have set that, that meeting and so council aware that we'll update that. The paid parking pilot project, of course, we will revise to reflect that we're coming back to council committee of the whole with new information. And briefly, I can report that with respect to Baldime Day, we did have a site meeting with Daryl from the escape park committee. And a representative of the design company to look at the Diamond Day site and so we are still on target to bring back information on March twenty third. So if council wishes to make a motion to receive those updates for information and amend the list accordingly, we could move on to lunch.
Councillor Demoda.
I'd like to move to accept that list and I'd like the format and process, I was going to bring up the sidewalks earlier. Or the crosswalks earlier and when I saw it on the agenda this weekend, there I didn't need to bring it up because I know that men's working on it, so. Yeah, I like to set up and I'd like to go forward on, so I motion that we accept that and if anybody has any additions to please add those in. And I'll accept it as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. Any debates, I take it not? All in favor of that motion? There are none opposed, we appear to have lost. Councillor Butler. That last delay Mister Given. Drove him to lunch. All right, thank you for that, I might just suggest that if we are going to have the motion action list. Addressed it. It would be easier, at least from my perspective. To have it on the, on the agenda as well. I overlooked it because it's, it's not listed, but. Fair enough, you brought it to my attention and we dealt with it. Oh, it is there, I jumped over it, my fault. There you go, I was. In error twice today. All right, then a motion to move in camera. At. Twelve forty six councillor McGrath. All in favor? That is carried, we are adjourned councillors, you will, I pardon me, we are, we are moving in camera. We will recess until one fifteen and you would have received a link from Miss Byrne earlier today for the. Link in to the in camera session at one fifteen. So we'll see you all then, thank you.